City Council meeting back to order. Kathy, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We always start off with our Pledge of Allegiance and our special recognitions. Abby Steiner, are you here? There she is. Perfect timing. Come on up. And your mother Molly is with you? Molly, you gotta come up, too. I don't know, I don't think you're gonna be trying to sit down. Good luck. And watch this. And you work for the city of Dublin.
I do.
How about you tell us and everybody else in the room what Abby has just accomplished?
Well, this year Abby won her fourth straight state title in the 200 meters and set a new state record, beating her old state record from previously. And she won her third straight title in the 100 meters and again broke her previous state record and set a new state record this year.
That's just unbelievable. Unbelievable. And what are those times? Just to put this in reference for us, what were your times, Abby?
My hundred time was an 11:38 and then my thirty time was like 22:73.
Wow, so now you're the current state record holder in both? And the state record holder you beat was also you?
Yes.
Wow. Is that all you have to brag about, Abby? Jeez. Well, you know, this council up here is always amazed and privileged to see the youth that come through this school system and that come through our community. And you represent us so amazingly well, not just here in Dublin, but across the state and beyond even that. So we're very, very proud to have you here and it's our pleasure to be able to present you with this proclamation that reads as follows. Whereas Dublin Kaufman High School student Abby Steiner has capped off her senior year with record-breaking titles, honors, and recognition, including being named the Gatorade Ohio Girls Track and Field Athlete of the Year for the second time. Once again, just beating yourself. After having earned it her sophomore year. And whereas on June 2nd, 2018, she won her third consecutive outdoor state championship in the 100 meter dash and her fourth consecutive state championship in the 200 meter dash, setting new state records in both. And whereas she won her third indoor state championship in the 60 meter dash and her fourth indoor state championship in the 200 meter dash, setting new state records in both. And whereas Abby earned All-American honors in the 60 meter dash and 200 meter dash at the indoor national championships, finishing fifth and second respectively. And whereas Abby was named Athlete of the Year by This Week Sports, Best Prep Athlete by Columbus Monthly, and was a finalist for the 2017-18 Gatorade National Girls Track and Field Athlete of the Year. And whereas she also excels at soccer and helped the Kaufman Girls Soccer Team finish Division One State Runner-Up her freshman year and make it to the district final as a sophomore, where she was named District Player of the Year. And whereas after tearing her right ACL during a soccer camp in July of 2016, she worked hard and persevered to regain her competitive edge, resulting in many of these triumphs after her injury. And whereas Abby, who also excels in the classroom, plans to major in pre-physical therapy at the University of Kentucky, where she earned scholarships in both soccer and track. Now therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of all of Dublin City Council, do hereby congratulate Abby Steiner on her outstanding success, which includes 16 state titles and three-time All-American honors. Signed, the 2nd day of July, 2018. That's the fastest hand I've ever... You hold more state titles than any other one.
I don't know.
You don't have to if you don't want to, but okay. She has to run. Well done, Ann. That was fast. Scott, drink. Try to follow that one.
I know, it's tough. Not even close, trust me. Well, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity tonight. I'm gonna introduce Josh Bricker from our staff at Chris Werthen in a second. They're gonna announce another huge international event that has selected Dublin, Ohio. But I wanted to kinda tee it up for him quickly and talk about events. You know, we all, our residents, we all know our two flagship events, the Memorial Tournament and Irish Festival, but there's so many other kind of less events that aren't, have that much notoriety that are very impactful as well. You know, I can say from an economic standpoint, these events are huge for the city of Dublin. They bring in tens of millions of dollars to our community. Every time a visitor comes here to our town, obviously they're staying in a restaurant, they're eating at our hotels, they're shopping, they're using our gas stations and such, such a tremendous economic impact. And probably most important, they create jobs, which I know is a foundation for our community and our income tax and raises that as well. Our bed tax obviously impacts that. Last year, we had a record bed tax of $3.2 million to the city of Dublin. And we know there's a lot of beneficiaries of that bed tax here in our community, the Dublin Arts Council, many other organizations. In fact, in a couple of days, July 4th, that celebration, Sheryl Corral, that, I think it's fair to say that without the bed tax, it'd be hard for us to have that kind of support as well. I think one of the hidden benefits as well is the awareness that these events bring to our community and really on international and national stage. You know, I think for a lot of businesses, for the most part, are looking for this as well. You know, the next Robert Walter from Lady of Cardinal, they could be at one of these tournaments with their son and be introduced to Dublin for the first time and be looking for a place to house their business, future business, and might just be Dublin, Ohio. So I think that's important as well. As you can imagine, these events are extremely competitive with cities across the country bidding for these. And one thing I can say, we've always had the support of Dublin City Council and city staff over the years. There's no way we've got any of these events if it wasn't for your support with these events. So we thank you for that. So with that, I'm gonna have Josh and Chris come up and tell you what we have coming next.
Sure. Thanks, Scott.
Good evening.
Welcome.
It was around this time last year, we were letting you know that Dublin was selected for the 134th National, U.S. National Outdoor Target Championships, as well as the Buckeye Classic, which is a U.S. National team, the Team USA Qualifying Event, which will be here two weeks after, in this August. Well, we're excited today in partnership with Chris and Ace Archers, as well as the city of Dublin. We couldn't have done it without either partnership. We have been selected once again to host the 135th Annual National Championship for U.S. Archery. They will be back again next August. We were also selected to host the 2019 Collegiate Outdoor National Championships. They will be here next May. So we have two more international events. The Outdoor National Target, which is happening in August, will bring in about 600 archers from around 13 countries. So definitely an international event, bringing folks from all over the world to our great city. And the Collegiate National Championships will bring four to 500 archers from about 40 different universities from across the nation. So we'll be well represented and be able to showcase our great city to all of those visitors. So as I mentioned, Chris is with Ace Archers. He is the local entity that helped us bid on the event and will be running it from a local standpoint in coordination with USA Archery. But I wanted to also thank personally Lori with the events team. Working with her has been fantastic. And John with Dublin Soccer League, John Muir, because without his support and allowing us to use his fields during his permitted time, we would never be able to make events like this happen. So with that, we actually wanted to present council with a little commemorative gift that showcases all the different events that are coming. This is actual, an actual target that the shooters will be shooting on. But just to kinda give you an idea of the size of what they shoot on, it is four feet by four feet, rather large, but it lists all three of our international events that will be coming to...
And how far away to that, from that, do they stand?
Seventy meters.
Seventy meters.
Seventy meters?
Seventy-seven yards.
Oh, my God.
So if you could imagine, if you're standing near where the concession areas, the Dublin Soccer League concession area on the far west side of Dari, they shoot almost to where the fence of the Amazon Center is. There's a natural hill that separates the soccer fields from the fence, which is actually perfect for USA Archery. While they are incredibly accurate, should one happen to go awry, hits the hill, it's perfect, but it's quite the distance.
Wow. Wow, that's fantastic. Congratulations. Any questions from council?
What do they like about us?
What do they like? Honestly, they like a lot. They like every event that comes to Dublin, comments about how friendly the people are, how convenient it is that we not only have our 17 amazing hotels, but there's so many restaurants. And really, as you all know, one of the greatest attributes that we have is, while chain restaurants are great, we have so many locally-owned restaurants, especially in the downtown area, the Bridge Park and sort of Dublin area. They love visiting all those restaurants and not having to eat at the chains that are across America, get a little bit of local flavor. And then the facilities are top-notch. Parks and Rec does a fantastic job of maintaining the fields. Nothing but wonderful compliments on how great the turf is and how great the setup is, lots of parking, everything you can imagine in a perfect event, we're blessed to have our city be able to offer.
I've been to 25 national events, just nationals. We've never had a venue like Dari Fields where parking's right there, the width of everything is perfect, the grass is very, very nice. I mean, the venue is just, I mean, built for archery. It faces north. Little things like that we have to have. And there's, I've never been to a venue in the U.S. that is perfect.
Is it unusual to have it multiple years in a row like that?
A lot of times nationals, you'll bid on it for two years at a time, but to have collegiate nationals and USAT and everything else, I don't know of another venue that's ever done it.
Chris, who takes care of all this kinda stuff, arranging the targets, getting all this set up? Is that you that's done all this for us?
Yeah.
Which we all really appreciate. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Wow, that's fantastic.
So there are five events in 2018 that you can qualify to be on Team USA. So to go to the Pan Am Games, the Olympics, if it's an Olympic year, whatever year that might be, we are hosting two of those five, with the US Nationals and then the Buckeye Classic that Chris's group puts on. So any archer that wants to be on Team USA has to come to Dublin, Ohio to shoot, to show that they're worthy of representing the United States.
Wow.
Fantastic.
Yeah, that is fantastic. Any other comments or questions from council?
I think Greg should take that home. That'll look great on your...
I think I should.
Sonny will love that on your mail. That'll be outstanding.
I just can't even imagine what would happen. I'd be running back and forth in front of it and she'd be shooting at me. So, great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic, thanks. Scott, anything else you wanna add?
No, that's it.
Is that it? Good, great, thanks, Scott. We move on to the citizen comments portion of our agenda. I don't have anybody that's signed in, but if anybody's out in the audience that is interested in commenting on anything that's not on our agenda, just raise your hand and we will let you do that. Seeing none, we will move on to approval of the minutes. I move approval for approval of the minutes of the June 18th special meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Ann?
Mr. Keenan, Vice Mayor Amos Grums?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Second reading public hearing on ordinance is ordinance 44-18. Ann?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an infrastructure agreement for the construction of the West Plaza of the Riverside Crossing Park and the completion of related streetscape enhancements to North High Street.
Dan?
Good evening, members of council. Provided a memo in your packet relative to ordinance 44-18, this is, was in response to some of the comments raised at your June 25th council meeting regarding the West Plaza design and the construction and the approach to the construction. I think the staff memo was responsive to the questions or comments that we heard that evening, specifically some of the things that we tried to point out and respond to. And please, I'm sure you'll ask us if we weren't, we didn't quite get it. We have some folks here to help answer any of those things that we may not have addressed. But the memo does reiterate the design process for the West Plaza was part of a comprehensive master planning effort, taking into consideration both the east and the west plaza and park concepts, the pedestrian bridge, and the transition to the historic district. We provided some graphics that hopefully are supportive of that. We also have a video that we'll show you here in a little bit. We were able to put that in a video context. I don't know if you find that helpful. I think it was a little bit helpful last week as we were able to walk people through the concepts of the park. The previous city council in August of 17 with input from ARB in the basic plan process approved the site plan and the components of the design at that time. I think staff and the consultant have been responsive to the input along the way and incorporated that into the final design. The intent of the design, the bid timeframes, and the recommended construction procurement approach were trying to take advantage of and coordinate the timing of the North High Street reconstruction, Z1 and Z2 buildings, construction process, the pedestrian bridge construction, particularly as the pedestrian bridge lands on the west side, and the sequencing in order that a more timely and cost-efficient process and hence less disruptive construction process take place. And that's culminating in this ordinance regarding an infrastructure agreement. Staff also at your request suggested some of the implications of any design changes at this point. Certainly, that's your prerogative, you know, if you wanna make some changes. It could affect, however, some of the timing and issues that we laid out in the memo, just so that you're aware of those, since you asked what we think those might be. Hopefully, we answered that thoroughly for you. To date, about $100,000 has been spent pursuing the previous direction of council. A new design estimate would probably be about $45,000 to $60,000. I just bring that up 'cause I would anticipate that question. I think the council, you did find the video simulation helpful last time. We're gonna show you another one here in just a moment. Staff does recommend council take action this evening if at all possible and approve ordinance 44-18. As I mentioned, we have a range of resources here to help you tonight. We have Chris Kimbrel from MKSK. Crawford Hoying, we asked them to be here as well if you wanted to ask anything about construction, sequencing, and effects. We thought that might be helpful since we're using their contractor. And of course, staff is here as well, be happy to respond to any questions that you might have. And with that, I'll turn it over to, I think we've got Matt, Terry, and Mr. Kimbrel here.
I think the video will speak for itself. It kinda gives you a little bit different dimensions and, you know, the three-dimensional portion of this and just to understand how the traffic will flow through this plaza from the bridge up to that intersection there up to High Street. A lot of the interactive space is anticipated there on the patios of the restaurants, whereas this plaza is a little bit more of a flow of traffic from the pedestrian bridge. So some of the seating elements that you see there are primarily areas where people will be seated temporarily versus actually finding a spot to hang out and spend a great deal of time. I will say that, you know, the planters themselves were an intricate port, are part of being able to manage the slope of this plaza from a stormwater drainage standpoint to ADA accessibility. There was great extent given to the slopes to make sure that the access points on around both sides of the planters there were accessible from an ADA perspective. So I don't know if there's any more you wanna add to that.
Dana, council last time did request, I actually copied the video and that one file was so big, we actually put flash drives. We've added this video to that as well, so.
We might be able to put that in the zip drive as well or Dropbox so you can access it, too. Of course, we can replay that or what have you, just, I know that went kinda quick.
Okay, can we play it again?
Obviously, you're coming off the bridge here. The bridge deck is 14 feet wide, so the opening at the kinda narrowest part of the center of the plaza is about 21 feet wide and it widens out. Our thinking in designing this was that we wanted it to be both compatible with what was happening on the other side of the bridge, but not compete with views to the bridge. Just the smallness of the space kind of inherently suggests that you don't want to put something in the center of the plaza because it would interrupt the kinda natural circulation.
If you pause that for a little bit, maybe back it up just a little bit, four, five seconds. Those posts right there?
Yes, sir.
That's the deep traffic.
It is, the thinking with rock crests having a fairly steep slope, that a vehicle that was maybe out of control coming into the plaza, so the desire was to have crash-rated bollards that would protect pedestrians.
I mean, I'm thinking of all the kinda things you read about in the paper today and cars getting loose that, not necessarily accidentally, but on purpose.
There's a force protection component here, too.
They don't look that sturdy. I've seen a lot sturdier.
And price tag, they better be sturdy.
It's hard to put a price tag on lives. I just raised that point. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but...
What's the spread on those? If that is 21 feet wide, those are six foot on center-ish?
Actually, there would be a few more in that location because to achieve the crash rating, you actually need a four-foot spacing, so...
That's what I thought, yeah.
It's a good observation. And the reason for that is that the bollards combined, take two bollards, take the force of the blow.
I know some of the larger, maybe AEP, they put very large planters that kinda served a twofold purpose. They were constructed such that they would meet the crash requirements, but they also had the, you know, flowers and that kinda thing associated with them.
I think that the disadvantage here to an approach like that would just be that you would not have a very permeable kind of interest, entrance into the plaza, if that makes sense.
I had a question at ARB. I thought the, and maybe it's just not on the video, that there are more, the bollards look different on this side of the plaza than they do on the other, that they're less contemporary on this side and that they were more of that. They had showed a traditional, more of a, I don't know how to shape to it. Was that not?
I have had difficulty locating a historical bollard that also meets the crash rating, but we can continue to look for a product like that. There are not, there's not just a ton of companies out there that are producing this particular product.
You mentioned something about the planters in stormwater.
Yes.
Can you explain to me?
The thought was to just have low planters that, again, would not interfere with views to the bridge. So the thought is just they'll have a mix of ground cover and perennials in them. There's drainage within the planters, but it is only geared towards capturing stormwater that falls directly in the planter. The plaza, well, it's easy to kind of envision this as being flat. When you're actually out there, it tips to the northeast, like towards that tower. So all along the north and east perimeter, there is a slot drain that intercepts all the surface runoff before it gets to the building or the wall.
So they're not required for stormwater for the plaza?
They're not.
I misunderstood that.
One of the comments on there, I think, was meant to say, because when you look at, and we do have the drawing we can show you, I think it was in your packet, from an accessibility perspective, if you see the slopes that have to be maintained for pedestrians to have access, those routes exist around the perimeter primarily, and then you get over a 3% slope across the middle. It's the planters and the seating that actually provides the break in that slope that allows those things to happen. So it is part of the drainage and the topography for the site are all kind of integrally connected with each other, which is why you can't just pick up one of the seating or landscaping areas and have it all work the same. It's all integrated into the slope and the stormwater and the accessibility to the surrounding areas.
And that slope that Terry mentioned across the middle area there is a function of the running slope of High Street?
So the slope we're trying to make up is east-west because the planters are retaining north-south.
The slope is north-south.
So primarily, the slope running north-south here is what we're trying to mitigate in a way that does not look aesthetically, you know, not pleasing and isn't a... We looked at some alternatives that would require stairs on the northwest corner or a stramp scenario, if you're familiar with what I mean by stramp.
So did we miss the elevation of the thresholds? I mean, these two buildings have been under construction in the last year. Did we miss the elevations on the thresholds on the board, on the buildings on north-south that would require this?
Those buildings were designed and in construction prior to the design of the plaza, so on all four sides, we had a fixed condition. Z2 was the only building that we were able to influence as a part of the plaza design.
So we couldn't have made the Z2 building the threshold at that building an appropriate level, so we didn't have to have an elevation change on the plaza?
Again, it's a function of the profile of High Street, what the finished floors are set for those buildings.
Were there any changes to this based on the feedback from the last conversation we had here at council?
Since the last council, we didn't have any images or anything with regard to the plans because all we were ringing before you was the reimbursement agreement authorization. So there was no plans that were presented at that time. In terms of refinements that happened since council approved this in August on the final plan, there was...
No, I mean, last time when, the last reading, last meeting, we gave a fair bit of feedback on this, and I'm just wondering if any of that had been...
No. Again, we didn't have any graphics to share on the seating. What was asked was if we bring back graphics and show both what was included.
We saw graphics last meeting.
Not on the west side.
No, not on the west plaza.
Images, I guess I said. We had images, yeah.
Yeah, there could've been some images on that, but I think with regard, what we were asked to do, I think, was to bring back graphics that would show in detail what was approved, compare those and show them how they look in relationship to images on the east side of that area so that they, so that council could see actually what was designed as it was bid and take a closer look at those. That was our understanding.
So Terry, on a 2.125% slope, handrails from an accessibility perspective are not required?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? 2%?
Yeah, 2.12.
Handrails aren't required until you reach a 5% running slope.
So I think the other concern that I have is if you take a look at, I don't know where in the video it is, but on the south side between the planter and the building is eight feet, is that right?
That sounds right.
Is that right? It feels narrow to me if you're gonna be in a wheelchair with people walking with you. And so, you know, I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that. And I'm not sure how, what the distance is on that sort of...
You're talking about right here?
That's one of the areas. There's another one on the south and there's actually another one on the north. If you look at the accessible routes, they sort of come around the periphery, they don't, there's not one through the middle, which I, I mean, I sort of get, the grade there is, well, 3.3 is still within, I think 4.2 is the limit or something like that. But it feels very narrow that we're directing the accessible traffic around the outside routes. Is that not too narrow, you don't think?
I don't think it is. By code, you'd need 60 inches and you can neck that down to a narrower width for limited runs like, to deal with like utility poles and the right-of-way, things like that, you can limit it. But eight feet is a pretty comfortable width, I think in this context.
You know, we saw, we saw this when we did the basic site plan, and I think that was, that's one of the troubles of this body doing basic site plans is, I think there was a lot of feedback given about wanting this to feel a bit more open and being conducive to different layouts and different uses over time, which these planters make that very difficult. But really, the most bothersome thing to me is a statement you just made, and you said that you wanted it to be compatible with the other side of the bridge. And no, this is historic. This is historic Dublin. A lot of people have worked really hard to make this not compatible with the other side of the bridge. make this not compatible with the other side of the bridge. We selected different pavers. There's a different reviewing body. That this is supposed to feel different. You've entered our historic district. So I find it very disappointing, but we are where we are. And, you know, I don't have a huge interest in putting the burden on our taxpayers, but I, it's disappointing.
I guess one of the questions I have about that is, just at the work session a couple of weeks ago, we talked about removing this portion of the area out of the historic district. So I get the idea of just being, you know, when we talk about being open and just having lots of flexibility and maybe get rid of planters and so forth, you have just a lot of flexibility with benches and tables, and if that's the kind of thing you wanted to do, got it. But in that, if we're looking at something that ties in with the bridge and to provide a continuity, which I know was a lot of discussion before, and then the potential removal of this area out of the historic district, it's just a little bit of a confusing message to try to tie together. We're happy to do whatever it is. Obviously, council's direction is on tying this stuff together, but I think we view this as a transition from that more contemporary bridge and that, and then changing the brick and then transitioning over. So I think, I'm not defending anything, I don't take it the wrong way, just trying to figure out how to make that transition. Is it a blend of those things to make it a transition, or do you want it to be strictly historic by taking that stuff out and doing more of the black iron furniture stuff that you would do in the rest of historic district?
Well, I would want to make one thing clear. Please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason for take, this exclusive reason for taking this out of the historic district is so that the next person doesn't point to these teardrop, very contemporary planters and says, "I'd like to do planters like that because they're in the historic district also, and they're okay down there. Why aren't they okay here?" Of trying to.
And architecture as well, not just that, but.
Right. These elements, these very contemporary elements that we're bringing into the historic district, you know, in small pieces might be more palatable, but if we keep replicating them, it will become the contemporary district and not the historic district. And I think that was the sole reason, and if I'm misspoken, please correct me, just so that we won't have to fight that battle and say, "Well, they were able to do it here, there. Why can't we do it here?"
I appreciate that. Thanks.
And when you look at these pictures that are in our little red folders here, and then if you go back, can you go back to the video? Just any still portion of the video. There you go. Thanks, Matt. That looks like red brick, I don't know, you necessarily call that herringbone pattern, but a herringbone red brick pattern. Then these pictures we have, it looks more like a gray.
Those pictures have been updated. That was a mistake in the version that they put together at the end of last week.
Okay, so the video is what it will really look like?
The video and the versions that we're showing you, we have stills also. They were corrected to include the historic district, which is what was specked and approved on this project originally back in last August.
And I think we had mentioned that at the last meeting, that it would be red brick. It was going to reflect the historic brick.
And that's all good. Is there, so these teardrop things, as they're being described, are those made out of stone?
Yes, it's a gray, grayish granite is what's specified.
Is there anything that can be done without, and I agree with Chris, trying to upset the timeliness of all of this at this point doesn't seem to be a very wise or prudent thing to do. But is there any application to something to that that could soften it up? For example, and this is going to be a really bad example, but it's the only one I can think of. You know the underpass we have over now with the brand-new interchange that has all the canoes in it and all that stuff that just looks fantastic and the knot and everything else at it? 270 and 33, the whole huge interchange. And that's, it's sort of a softer color, and it has that pattern in it which sort of softens it up. Is there anything that could be done to those materials which doesn't slow this process down, but could maybe soften that stone-looking process? If the answer is no, then the answer is no. If that would slow us down and derail us to even entertain the conversation, then no, it would. But is there anything that can be done to sort of address these concerns?
I'd have to give that some thought, sir. Off the top of my head, I don't have a great answer for it.
That's a perfectly acceptable answer. So it's something that maybe you could think about that we could do later on in the process that would not slow us down? I'm not talking about redesigning them. I'm talking about, I don't know what it would be, but.
Well, I have, you know, I will speak to that. At ARB, you had more of a formed concrete. I realize you're utilizing granite here because you use granite on the other side, but when ARB saw this, the concrete was, and if you go back to that slide, there's a picture of it, that stationary slide that was the architectural graph. And you also spoke about the fact that you wanted ambient lighting on the plaza. We understood that the lighting would glow underneath that sort of rolled, and number C, they were soft like that on the side, on the little menu side, the legend on the side, that they had a rounded edge and that you had planned to have ambient lighting underneath the benches. That's, and, yeah, so I'm just curious as to why it changed to the granite, which was even more contemporary than that.
Yeah, I think there's a couple elements of that. As they started to work with the contractors on what was deliverable and what the costs of those would be, and the response to some of the contractors, even on installation, the price just came in extraordinary in terms of doing all that stuff with the precast on the side and the electrical solutions to it, they just simply did not like. So budget-wise, it was adding an extraordinary amount of money. I think from a granite perspective, when it came forth that the granite could be produced actually and save money, it's a higher quality material over the precast and the architectural concrete on it, and actually fit much more with kind of granite materials that form the curb and the other areas in that area, that was deemed as being a significant upgrade and improvement to that, to that product. There is power going into the landscape beds here for lighting so that we can decide what kind of fixtures and stuff to put in and add to those. But the notion of kind of the narrow LED strip along the bottom proved so expensive and difficult. There was no clear way that folks felt that could be go in and maintain and have any kind of life to it at all, and it was going to add extraordinary cost with probably very little utility and very short life.
What about the lighting along the handrails? Is that still planned?
Yes, that's still included. And in fact, just by way of scheduled discussion, the bridge contractor begins working on lighting, handrails, and wiring on West Plaza next May. That's one of the big drivers here of kind of getting this thing done as complete as it can be so that that piece of the scheduled pedestrian work, because the rail that you saw in the video is the exact same rail that goes along the pedestrian bridge, and that's why we're having a single entity do that in a coordinated way with the lighting and the other elements.
Right. I think, I think the problem that I have with it is that it's gone through some processes, and it's, granted, this design has followed the process. It's passed through with each one. But with each one, there have been comments about the hardness of it or the contemporary line of it. And the bollards being more traditional was recommended at ARB, and also ARB had recommended a little bit more vertical green space, not to maybe a thinner tree or a vertical green that would not obstruct the view to the river or to the bridge. Everybody wanted that. And I keep not seeing those happening. I don't want to see a delay. I don't want to see our taxpayers paying any more money. It just seems a little hard to imagine that we can't still use, and I understand that you have to have the accessibility with the slopes. I can't see at this point, I don't have much chance of changing it, but this hardness just doesn't speak transitional, and yet you do want it to match up, and I think that was my concern the last time, is that you want it to be complementary to the other side, but you don't want to walk across and all of a sudden don't feel like you transitioned at all. So my challenge would be, is there a way that we can save the timing of the process and somehow, if you're going to use the granite, utilize those beds to create more of a softness with vertical green spaces or do something with the shaping of the granite that gives us a little bit less of this hard contemporary edge? It just seems awfully strong. Whether you break up the long lengths like we did in the, what we suggested on the west side, that it seemed a little bit like there were no niches, it just seems like you just want to shoot through it. And I guess maybe traffic is the important thing here, but it's also, we mentioned earlier that it doesn't prohibit small, you don't want to prohibit small events. So I ask you if this bench design helps or restricts small events, how do we get it so that if you have a small event in there, you don't feel like it's just too cold to sit on?
The planters, like they facilitate pedestrian ADA. I mean, they also facilitate pretty much the best slope that we can achieve where you could have a meaningful event. They're pushed to the perimeter, which perhaps makes that perimeter circulation seem narrow, but that's in the interest of maximizing the space that is available.
And you know what? I really appreciate that. And I don't see moving them, at this point, I don't see moving them or changing the way you have the dynamics working for you in order to hold those slopes. I guess maybe if that plaza seems cold, maybe that sense of shade or utilizing, I know it's all low-growing things, but maybe we need to get some verticality in there just to give a sense that you have a little bit of a umbrella over your head or a comfortable place to sit. It just seems very wide open and cold in some ways. But those were the recommendations of ARB, is to get some verticality in there and to get a little softness in those plantings, so.
I got a question on the, okay, so, you know, this is both bicycle and pedestrian use. Okay, so, you know, it's not, unless I'm missing this, on the brick pavers, it's not exactly mapped out this portion for bicycle trails, right? Or is it mixed?
No, there's no, like, demarcation.
Okay, so what I'm thinking is, you have people on bicycles coming at you, and I remember this in Portland, Oregon, and they're moving towards you, and these things do have another function, and that is, it sort of separates the pedestrian use from the bicycle use. So in a way, you're going to feel safe left and right, depending on how this thing shakes out and who uses what, by standing to the left or right of these barriers with bicycle traffic coming back and forth through there. So I sort of see, you know, what you're trying to do is create two substrates of pedestrian and bicycle use. I mean, since we don't really have this thing mapped out, paved out in linear fashion, so this is a bike lane, this isn't a bike lane. So I can see why, you know, they really help us in that particular aspect.
That's, that's fair and accurate, I think.
You know, they have a function. Now, the other question is, say, since this is a landing area, and to go back to Chris's point, if we're going to establish tents and have some kind of street fair or some kind of party, the question is, you know, can we make them narrower or that you can tent over them or tent beside them or something and still get the passageway utilized? So this isn't just another, I guess we have some other areas for those kind of gatherings, and especially the other side of the bridge has a huge area for those kind of gatherings and a multiple bunch of them. So I don't know if it's fair to say, okay, over here, we also got to create another subspace for group gatherings. I don't, I think this is more of a circulation aspect to your design than a fixed asset related to a subspace for gatherings.
I think it serves more as a threshold to the bridge.
Right.
As much as anything.
Right. So I can't see it being, you know, that, another gathering space. Or if you utilize that, you might put a tent over these kind of things and do that. But I'm sort of worried about the circulation with people on bicycles flying through there, going either direction. You know, we're, it's just like walking against the crowd in the airport. You know, now you're going to throw in a bicycle component. So I get what you're trying to do, using these, these planters to help direct space. I don't think you mentioned that yet, but I think that's an important aspect to it.
Just real quick on the bollards. There's a Reliance Foundry that did historical bollards that are used at Fenway Park in Boston, and they're very historically compatible. And they're along Lansdowne Road, right at the main gate. So maybe we could look at some, some of those kinds of bollards. I think there is a few to pick from out there.
Okay, thank you.
That's something we could still do without slowing the process down, isn't it? Anything else?
That would not be, you know, like a major change. All of those systems work essentially the same.
Okay.
A question that I have, great. I mean, I don't want to spend more of the taxpayers' money. It is disappointing to me that the feedback from these groups, and it went through the process, and then the pictures are different than what we're seeing here. That is disappointing and frustrating. So I think what you hear is frustration here. I think you hear many of us saying, "We would like to do some things different, but now we feel like these changes are at the taxpayers' expense, and that feels wrong, too." And that just feels rough to me. One of the questions that I have is, I mean, these things cannot be inexpensive. They cannot be. I mean, these planters, the granite. If we were to remove one, narrow one, could it not be a wash in terms of expense to the taxpayer to soften this up and make a change so that we're not spending more of the taxpayers' money, but we're getting what the groups asked for when it went through the process? That's a question.
I'm not sure I completely follow how removing the green would facilitate.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure I completely follow how removing one of the planters and the very small amount of green in the space would facilitate that desire for softness.
I think what you heard from, that the way that ARB said, if we had the planters, we had the design, you had lighting, it creates softness there. We're saying, "We can't do that. That was too expensive. We're going to do this instead." So my question to you is if there were our less expensive alternatives to the granite that is there, could we not have the less expensive option so we're not asking the taxpayers to pay more to arrive? That's the question I'm asking. So I don't know what the cost to modify these and would be. We've heard there were some design change numbers, but I just feel like it's, we're in a tough place here, and that's disappointing.
Well, and I guess, you know, I guess the thing that I want to make sure is clear is that, I hear you loud and clear, I think that this has been a building process. It's not something that just happened. I mean, I understand that the previous council and the times that it came through, I do recall some discussion about the approach, and all of this was discussed even, for the most part, in August of last year about some of the approaches and the widths of the different paths and so forth. When the, when the action was taken to go down this road, that's the design that we undertook. I'm not saying there weren't some difference of opinions at that point or that there were other ideas, but I think this reflects the ongoing input processes from ARB and council and others through the process. Now, not everyone along the way may have agreed with every aspect of that, but in the aggregate, I think this reflects that. So, and it was part of a master planning process, and I just want to make sure that that is stated here as well. So I understand too, and look, there's nothing I want more or less, but there's nothing, there's nothing, what I never want to do is strap your hands to the point that you don't feel like you can't make an adjustment. It's just that, you know, it's incumbent upon me to make sure everyone's aware of the implications and how we got to where we are, and any changes you want to make and what those implications are. Not trying to rattle anyone or scare anyone. You know, you don't get too many chances to do this, and certainly would like to do it right. But I think what we're showing you is what we felt is right based on a litany of processes and inputs. So that's all. I guess, so I'll get off that soapbox. I don't mean to be that way. I apologize. The other thing, too, I'd like a little bit of clarity on or for the record, is the expectation of this space. Planters or no planters? I think I've heard off and on over time that some people feel this is more of a gathering space. Some people feel this is more of a access to the bridge off and on. I just look at the measurements, and I'm no expert. Even if there were no planters on here, if you put tents up or anything like that to try to do things on this plaza, it's almost too, I'm just going to tell you it's too narrow. And you're going to have nothing but a mess of people trying to get, those are the kinds of things you want to do, perhaps in the future, spaced by the library. Maybe even you take, now that you got a parking garage, you can do that in Darby Lot. You can create, you know, spaces and things for people to do things over there when we get more parking capacity. So this is a, and again, I'm no expert on this. This is a way to get back and forth, not as much, it's not that you couldn't do small things there, but I don't want to, I don't want to be confused, and I don't want the public to be confused or anyone to be confused over how much or how little this can be used. You know what I mean, in terms of act. In terms of activities, stationary activities and things like that here. So, for what it's worth, I just.
Dana, I agree with you that the process going through ARB and all the others was this design. The materials changed and the lighting changed. The things that, if you say it's contemporary, those soft elements that gave this a little different look and a feel with the lighting underneath the seating, as you mentioned, at ARB, even though some of us disagreed and thought that it was still too strong, that made you feel better knowing that you had this sort of rolled edge on the concrete and the lighting underneath, and it was going to create a sort of a glow there as you approached the bridge in the evening, those kinds of things. The suggestion down the historical looking bollards was that transition piece that we said, as you stepped off the curb, you knew where you were going. And then the suggestion on the verticality, you're right. People are going to go there for lunch and have a sandwich, or walk across with a book and sit down and read. So you need a little cover. You know, you need a little softness, and that's where I'm looking for the, for a little height. That's not going to cost anything to put those in those beds, do you know what I'm saying? So the ambient lighting, I think, was something that we were all looking forward to. That green verticality, which gives you a little sense that you are in a room and not exposed. Because what I do see that you may have is maybe a street performer there, and people are going to sit and look at it. Or something that happens when the bridge is opening up and there's an announcer and you're getting ready to start a race or a walk or something. So it's a place that people are going to gather only to hear maybe one or two or three people. You don't want to sit totally exposed. And it's a hard edge to look at when you're sitting on the patios. There's no softness anymore. So that's where I'm going now, so that you don't slow it down.
I totally get that. And, you know, and I want to, I want to be clear, too. My job's never to sit here and tell you no. My job's to sit here and tell you, okay, how can we get there? So, you know, I think, you know, the 80% solution is probably hand in terms of timing and the bulk of this, if you agree to that. You know, the one thing I would suggest is maybe we can come back with those, as we start to move down this road, with some thoughts on how we might be able to soften or do those, the lighting, some of the planting, or even soften edges and do some things around this kind of material, even though the shapes are generally there. Is there a way to kind of do something that makes it feel more antique-ish as opposed to, you know, just the hardness? If there's a way to soften up those kind of materials, let us work through that while this is starting to go down. There's a lot of subsurface work to be done. There's a little bit of time in here, but not much on the critical path at all. That's why we're saying what we are, and see if we can't come back with those kind of suggestions. Is that, is that, am I, I don't want to, I also don't want to offer the impossible.
No, I think, I think your responses are right on there. For example, there is power going into those landscaped areas. What happens with that lighting? We basically said, that's yet to be determined on that because it wasn't finalized on that. So I think, how do we light these in a way that softens that up in some fashion? I think that these two have been talking about what kind of flexibility do we have in plant material in terms of what's contemplated there? And maybe we can come back with a little more feedback with regard to how dynamic or what scale that plant material can have to help take an edge off on this. Dana and I were talking on a related topic here, and I think it might be important to this one. And Kathy, I think it gets your comment with regard to process. Basically, when final development plan is approved in August, that generally gives green light to kind of proceed with the final design construction drawings. We were having that discussion as related to the east side plan that council was looking at and recognizing, the designers told you, he hasn't even retained the fountain consultant yet on that. Council's probably going to have an interest in wanting to see that as it emerges. So probably what we should be looking at doing is even at final development plan on these really large initiatives, is when those get approved, help council specify, we want to see the detailed landscaping as that gets to 75, 80, 90%. We'd like to see the concept on the fountain on the east side as it emerges, so that those things that still need to get looked at, as they get more refined, when you go from 45%, which is about what you are most typically at final development plan approval, and go to construction drawings, a lot of decisions have to be made along that way with regard to it. But I think Dana said we ought to articulate upfront to council based on what we're hearing from you as we bring back the east side park concept. Those things we think you're going to want to take a closer look at as the plans and designs get more specific and get more meat on them.
Yeah, we need, I just want a lot more check-ins along the way, and so that's our commitment to you.
Couple of quick questions, and I promise I'll stop. Can you pull the rendering back up? So on the north side there, K, planters at Building Z1, restaurant tenants spill out seating, are those intended to be city planters?
That, early proposal from the Cameron Mitchell Restaurant, there has been no easement provided for that. Would take several actors to do that.
There has not, okay, thank you. That was my question.
On that, with regard to that going forward.
Yeah, so.
That's a yet-to-be discussed, a negotiated idea.
I feel like at this point, that just needs to not be there until it's, at some point that we decide we want to do that. So that was one question. Oh, I totally lost my other question. I'll think of it later. Sorry.
I got a question for the designer. On the stippled part that represents the seating area on these benches, is that like a 12-inch seat? Is that what we're looking at? Scale-wise? I'm just trying to figure out.
They vary a little bit, but yeah, that would be the minimum.
Because I'm sort of looking at these things, and they're really pretty narrow, planning-wise. I see them as a way to direct traffic. I think, you know, maybe we could still vote for this tonight if we do the following. We ask for an older-looking bollard. Maybe reconfigure the, I don't know if you can reconfigure the planters to make them more in keeping with this historical area. I don't think this is a, you know, I don't think we've been really fair with you during this whole process in a whole lot of ways. Because, you know, there was some discussion of, let's have this a open space with tents, but it really isn't that space. It's a transitory space. People coming in and out, moving across the bridge. So, you know, I don't know if that's really a, was a fair thing unless that's what council really wants to do. The next thing is, I think, even though it's a wider space, the idea of breaking it down into subspace, in these little subspace separators to allow pedestrian and bicycle traffic to be separated, makes a lot of sense on what you're doing. The nuances, you know, that we've been looking for, you know, when you want older-looking bollards rather than newer-looking bollards, and can we make these things look a little more? I don't know where you want them. I think, design-wise, now, if you can make them look older and erect a linear, and I think, you know, some of the, yeah, and I think you already said you were utilizing limestone, right?
Granite.
Okay.
Granite.
So.
Could you roll the, could you, these look like very hard corners. You know, when we were ordering this material, can we look at ground or more softer corners? Would help get the feel softer so we didn't have a 90-degree angle? Maybe there was a bevel of some sort on the edges that would take a little bit of the contemporary feel off some of them?
That's what we were trying to accomplish. If you look at the planner that's in the foreground, I think it maybe starts to illustrate that. You can see it's rounded at the kind of nose there closest to us. I think the one in the background is modeled unnecessarily sharply, so I take your point. And that could certainly be softened, rolled.
And, you know, maybe when there's some acid treatments, there's different treatments you can do to granite to make it feel a little softer and less harsh. You know, they have a leather finish on them and those kinds of things. If there was any way we could, you know, just, granite is a wonderful material and probably a good selection for some of the areas in here. But the details are going to be important to make it feel a little more comfortable than harsh.
Maybe also, I was alluding to that, too. Maybe even look at older, maybe look older than just stark dew and so. Those are the kinds of things we could explore and come back.
It's not shiny polished granite.
I understand that. It's cut, but it's a finished cut granite. Maybe we could have it be more of a ground finish than a cut finish?
And I remembered my question. What do you assume the acoustics of this are going to be? There's a lot of hard surfaces there. Don't know.
It's very open. I mean, you, if you go out there today, I mean, it's pretty noisy. I imagine, you know, high street traffic will bounce around in there a little bit, but that's a function of the buildings.
Sure, it's a function of buildings, but there's also just a lot of other hard surfaces that's bouncing off. I was just asking. You know, and there may be other ways to soften that up with, you know, localized plantings along, I don't know. But I was just curious as to what the assumption was about what the acoustics are going to be in there, because I think it's going to be noisy.
Yeah, I think we have to drive this to some kind of conclusion, and I don't think we've been totally fair with you, like, okay, we don't like it, but while we like it, but we don't like it to a certain level. It's gone through an entire process. But, you know, no one's saying, hey, here's exactly what we need to make this work. And I know as a designer, you're waiting for that because you've got seven people critiquing this thing, and they're not really, you know, I can see the look on your face. You're not getting the kind of direction, you know. Do we tear out all the planters so we can have a giant subspace and put tents on it, which probably wouldn't fit this space? So that might be off the table. And then, how do you modify these planters to make them look a little more like you're entering the historic zone? I think that's sort of where you're at.
Well, mine is the softness, I think, the landscape, helping with some trees plantings. The other thing I was going to ask you is that I just came back from Chicago, and I was at Navy Pier, and I noticed that they use a lot of stone, and then they use that, I don't know if it's Bahu wood, the wood they use for seating. Is there any way that you can incorporate on the seat that wood and still remain, leaving the granite foundations and back, and maybe incorporating a wood seating that would soften that? I'm just throwing out an idea.
Sure. There's examples like that in Public Square in Cleveland, where it's cast stone, wood, eBay slats on it.
Right. For me, my direction would be, it needs to be softened with landscapes, ambient lighting, and if you can incorporate wood, I'm done.
Sounds like everybody's saying pretty much the same.
Yeah, let's see if we can get this.
I, thank you for that. I think we can come back with some ideas around these things and just keep you apprised of that and see if there's a way to meet that in. I think the guidance we're looking for is whether we stay with the current, you know, substructure and timing and so forth, and then we can do these kinds of things to soften it up and add the lighting and do those things that have been mentioned, and, yeah.
I think that's where we are. I don't think council wants to slow this project down, and we'll make a good faith gesture to pass it, probably with seven votes, if we could just get a good faith effort back to try to address some of these softness concepts.
Sure, we can certainly do that.
Knowing that you'll do the best you can.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
You got there. Ann?
Sorry, Vice Mayor Amaro Scrums?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan, Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Alito?
Yes.
Ordinance 45-18, Ann.
Amendment to the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018.
Angel?
Good evening, members of council. This supplemental appropriation provides the funding for the infrastructure agreement that you just approved.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Ann?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro Scrums?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Alito?
Yes.
Introduction in public hearing on resolutions, resolution 33-18, Ann.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2018 sidewalk maintenance program.
I want to do so.
Thanks, Christina. Dana?
I'll ask Megan to approach the mic, and I'll, because the next several resolutions are bids, so she can add comment to these. But this particular bid represents our sidewalk maintenance program. As you can see, is within the capital improvement budget. You can see who our lowest bidder is. This was certainly within a tolerance of what we were looking for. Reputable company, and staff would recommend approval of this resolution so that we can get underway with our sidewalk maintenance program for the year. If you have any specific technical questions, Megan can.
Any questions for Megan?
I just have one question. This is pure replacement, so the shaving is a separate entity. So all of these sections, I think, that are referred to on your spreadsheet are replacements. There's no shavings in this.
Yes, they are. That's correct. So these are all replacements. We mentioned the shaving work that we'll also perform this year in the memo, only because that's part of the budget.
I saw that as $15,000. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's an entirely different company that does that type of work.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I do.
Kathy?
Thank you. A couple, one of the things that I read in here is that along the way, and if they find that when they need to go make these replacements, that the trees need to be removed, they would be removed. I saw in here, careful placement. And one of my concerns, frankly, is that we preserve some of those trees. I know when they did sidewalk replacement, just in my neighborhood, it was, it just changed the whole personality. We lost a lot of mature trees when we did the sidewalks. I know there's been some changes to that. So could you share with me a little bit about the process? They discover they needed to be trained, a tree needs to come out, a city staff shows up. How do we make sure that if they have to remove a tree, it is that the only way it can be done? Can you help me through that?
Well, and, you know, our top priority is to preserve trees as well, and that's one reason why we've added the tool of sidewalk shaving to the mix. That's a great tool that we have that is not as intrusive as replacements, for sure. So we're going to, first level of addressing sidewalk issues is to perform the shaving, number one. Second, as part of the replacement program, once we perform the excavation or the contractor performs the excavation, then we see what they're going to get into in terms of what roots are under the surface. And we have a forestry staff member that's out with the contractor, observing the work in conjunction with an engineering inspector. And those forestry staff members are the ones that take a look at the roots, and they perform an assessment and determine whether the root can be shaved or whether the root can be removed. And then they'll also perform the assessment as to whether there's too large of a root that's going to be removed such that it will impact the stability of the tree. So it's a joint conversation that occurs with forestry, engineering inspection, as well as the contractor. But that is last resort as part of our program.
So, in every instance, there'll be someone from the city doing that assessment so that the contractor isn't making that judgment by themselves?
That is a city call, definitely.
And is there any way to make those assessments at all before you move, remove those sidewalks, or do you have to remove that sidewalk to know?
We really need to excavate the sidewalk to see what size the root is underground and how much it's impeding into the area where we'll be placing the sidewalk.
And by definition, I mean, you're replacing the ones where there's big bulges, right? Where it's too large to shave. So we know we've got issues going in.
Yes, we will be getting into roots, but we just don't know how large of a root we're going to be getting into and what the impact will be on the actual tree stability.
I think for the first time I read in this that you would be doing canopy reduction as you impacted the root system. There was some language in here about appropriate canopy reduction to offset the compromise of the root system, and I think that's.
What is that? What do you mean by that?
That's one tool.
So when you, when you take off, let's say, an eighth of the root system, you've got this one large root coming out under the sidewalk, and then you have the balance intact. If you then remove one-eighth of the canopy, then you have not added additional stress onto the tree because its resource reduction is equivalent to its needy reduction. So.
And that's where the expertise of our forestry staff really comes in.
You should do that with my kids. The resource reduction is directly.
But it's really a bound.
This is a really important thing, and this is what makes so many of these neighborhoods so fantastic, is, you know, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but I just, I just think this is so important. And when we outsource it, I just want to make sure we have the staff that we're doing this, because that, it just changes things. And the least that we would have to do that, I know the residents, some of them would prefer not to have that sidewalk changed than to lose some of those trees. And so, this is, I know it doesn't maybe sound like a big deal, but it is a big deal.
No, I understand.
And so I appreciate that, but the canopy is a very good, I didn't quite understand that, so that's.
Root pruning with canopy pruning and if you do them in the same percentages, then you don't add undue stress to the tree. There's only one other thing that you could do to finish the tape with having done all that you could would, to do some sort of copper sulfate treatment beneath, in the aggregate beneath the sidewalk because roots won't grow into a system where there's copper present and so that would discourage root regrowth into the aggregate that's beneath the sidewalk is, that's the last thing you could do and then you would have exhausted all of your efforts to do your best for the environment that you could.
We can have that conversation with forestry staff.
I appreciate that because that really does make a difference, that's, you know, obviously makes us special. The other question, go ahead.
I was just going to say that we have a lot of oversight on this work, it's in residents' front yards, it does potentially impact trees, whether it's the canopy, the roots, whatever, so it's a very closely guarded operation. The contractor will not be removing any trees on their own volition, that decision is made by city staff.
Thank you. And then the other question is unfortunately, this doesn't clear up the list of all the sidewalks that need fixed, obviously, I mean, this is a good list. So I know the engineering's estimate was that the cost was somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars was engineering's estimate, this, the lowest bid, two forty-nine something. So as, and the comment was, it could be because they just don't know how many roots and all this type of work. Is this a fixed price thing, so if at the end, could we actually do more if it turns out not to be as onerous or not? This is the fixed price contract?
Yeah, so we received bids per these locations.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we deal with it in the budget, we allocated an X amount of dollars each year and that not to exceed.
Yeah, I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm just saying, engineer estimated this to be around two hundred, the lowest bid was around two fifty. I was just asking if the work didn't, was it that if the work didn't consume all the time, the contractors protecting themselves and I fully understand that.
Guaranteed maximum sort of.
Yeah, guaranteed maximum, that if there was more opportunity to add more, that was my question.
Council can do whatever they want in terms of dollar amount, but at the end of the day, nobody does this across the country that I'm aware of. Pretty unusual for a city to do sidewalk replacement. Normally they just put a tag on the door, they fix it and then they put it on your tax bill.
Yeah, that's not the question I'm asking, I'm just saying, is there any flexibility in that amount? That was my only question.
This is a unit price contract, so we will have some pluses and minuses, so we'll pay for actual work performance.
It is a unit.
So it could be a little less, it could be a little more.
Got it, okay.
There's the potential for.
It's also a great point too, I'd like, thanks for teeing that up. I think it's a great, great point to make that in the budget going into this year, council significantly increased the amount of sidewalk maintenance and I should have probably mentioned that early on about against the amount of work that we had identified as a result of more comprehensive inventory of the need, so I think trying to clip it off at this pace will certainly get us there and certainly if we have.
And I know the residents are excited about this and happy about this, so I.
Yeah, and I just want to add that, you know, certainly as we look at our budgets, when we have funds available from other projects and so forth, we could always look at, can we do more? For instance, our repaving program came in a bit under budget this year, so we're trying to look at where we could catch up some repaving, so we're always trying to make those, just to answer the question, we always try to make those kind of adjustments.
Also, the list of addresses that's in the packet, all of those addresses are being addressed with this contract.
You know, Megan, we brought this up years ago, another solution to this is you've got some kind of ordinance and some cities have it, so when you hit the green spaces between the sidewalk and the street, that area is, when it's built, is really backfilled topsoil because a lot of these trees will rise up prematurely because there's no oxygen in the soil. Because when the guy builds a street, he jam packs down the large stone base, then you come in the backhoe, try to plant the trees, so the trees then start suffering, they need oxygen in their root base because there's no soil down there or they pack the clay down, so the trees rise up, they got to rise up to survive because they need the oxygen. So obviously they push your sidewalks out. So, and I remember bringing this up years ago, there's a lot of ordinances in other communities where they said, when we start doing these green spaces, we actually condition the soil to a certain depth, that the tree will actually grow there and have a chance to go down to the substrate and we never really did that. But that's another way to handle this. If you're, if this is getting really super expensive to keep repairing these sidewalks, you can write a specification for that to cover it.
Yeah, and I know Paula Chubb with forestry, she maintains a list of approved street trees and that list has been adjusted over time too to make sure that we have deeper.
But it's a survival thing with part of the trees, it's the way the streets are really created and the fact that, you know, we don't really govern, govern these kind of things or stipulate what's going to happen in these green spaces. Ergo, you create a problem and you have to solve the problem and there's other ways to do this that, you know, you can do it correctly upfront when you're putting the streets in that doesn't allow this to happen and there's other communities that do do this.
I think he's referring to installation processes more than plant material.
Sure.
And that's also similar to.
It's an engineering thing.
Widen the tree lawn width as well, which.
It's a spec that would go.
As well, but we have these older situations out there that.
It's a specification that would go along with the street installation.
Megan, just one more quick question. I anticipate a homeowner will get a notice and know that they have a tree that's impacting the sidewalk and in order not to lose their tree, they will say to you, I don't want you to fix my sidewalk. So I want to ask you what the option is there? If the sidewalk's not very bad, will you let it go if they don't want it or will you insist that it's fixed or?
Well, I think we'll have that conversation, you know, every situation's different, so the staff that's out in the field will have that conversation with the resident. We'll take another look and we could see if it's an option for shaving or a situation where we could consider shaving. I believe that we caught all the situation or all of the locations in the city that can be addressed by shaving, but we can definitely take a look at each locations to see if we can.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Anne?
Vice Mayor Amaro's Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Resolution thirty-four dash eighteen, Anne.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement with Washington Township to provide flushing and pumping services for public fire hydrants, City of Dublin.
I'll introduce it. Anybody have any questions for staff? Megan is still standing there. Eric and Chief W. Connell are back there as well, I don't imagine they have anything to add. Hearing nothing. Anne?
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro's Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Resolution thirty-five dash eighteen.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Air Force One for approximately eighteen hundred square feet at fifty to eight hundred Shire Rings Road. Introduction.
I'll introduce it. Donna?
All right, good evening, members of council. Before you tonight is a resolution to execute a lease agreement with the longtime Dublin-based company, Air Force One. Since their inception, the company has continued to expand their services and is currently in need of yard and storage space. The proposed agreement includes approximately eighteen hundred square feet of unimproved warehouse space and thirteen dedicated parking spaces. As per the terms of the agreement, the lessee is obligated to cover costs incurred for modifications and services necessary to accommodate their occupancy in addition to the monthly rent. Given the company's adjacency to the city-owned property at fifty-eight hundred Shire Rings Road and our capacity to accommodate their need, we seek authorization to execute the lease agreement as described in your packet. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council?
I have just one. On page twenty-three of the document, there is a schematic of the floor plan.
Yes.
And on the schematic, there's red, there's yellow, bright yellow and green.
Yes.
I don't see a, and I probably missed it, but I don't see a code chart of what each of those colors represent.
The, and that's a fair question, the chart that, the colors refer to the divisions that occupy those spaces, so green is building standards, red is planning, yellow is IT and economic development. If you look, the exhibit B shows floor one and you'll see the shaded side in the corner.
They hashed out the left side of the red.
Correct, that's the space that will be occupied by Air Force One.
Oh, okay. I could, not for the life of me, because it had second floor as well and so.
It did and that's, there's a mezzanine level there and then the other space is open to the floor below, so that's why that's hashed out as well.
Good, so that's like that conference room space that's expandable, it's got to be the.
That's correct and one of the issues that we are working our way through is to make sure that access is secure in both directions for not only the city staff, but for the Air Force One team as well.
Thank you, that's all the only question I had.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? Anne?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro's Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Resolution.
This is a motion to waive the council rules.
Okay, that's what sort.
Thirty-six and thirty-seven.
For thirty-six and thirty, okay, I make a motion to waive the council rules of order to address resolutions thirty-eight, eighteen, thirty-nine, eighteen together, is there a second?
Second.
Anne, on that motion.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro's Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
And Anne, if you could please just read the titles into the.
These titles, resolution thirty-eight, eighteen is approving the petition for special assessments for special energy improvements projects under Ohio revised code, chapter seventeen-ten. This is for the forty-eight sixty to five thousand Blazer Parkway project and resolution thirty-nine, eighteen, a resolution approving necessity of acquiring, constructing and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District for this same project.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks, Christina. Jeremiah?
Good evening, members of council. So this evening in front of you is a proper resolution for a property assessed clean energy, otherwise known as PACE, financing for one of our larger office buildings, buildings plural, in Dublin. This project represents a energy efficiency improvement project totaling eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. The financing for this is provided by the Franklin, Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority. Also notable is the city actually has no financial obligations for this type of project and financing, simply serves as a pass-through entity for the, for the finance authority to finance that special assessment on the property itself. There is a representative here from the Columbus Franklin Finance Authority to answer any questions. Also to note, this is our second project, we did our first last September for the Sata Corporate Center and obviously the other project is forthcoming with some couple of their paperwork to get signed, but I'm here to answer any questions as well as Jeremy from the finance authority.
Thank you, Jeremy, for coming. Appreciate it. Any questions from council?
Thank you, this is, this is great for our corporate residents to be able to reinvest in their buildings and ultimately make investments in our community, so, and at no cost to us.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Kathy?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's fantastic, I just wonder why more don't do it, so is, I noticed there was a minimum amount that has to be spent, so it has to be a significant enough project. Could you share a little bit more about what are the requirements?
Sure, I mean, obviously like any financing project, there are associated costs for the financing itself. Some building owners choose not to do so because they can do that in a cash basis, they can actually just pay for themselves. Actually, one of our first projects that we do a lot, that we put in front of, they ended up doing an all cash project and sometimes they also choose not to do so just based on carrying cost of that property because that assessment can be passed on to the tenants and sometimes they choose not to do that just to keep the overall costs and rentals of the property competitive, quote unquote, so.
Jeremiah, we see more of these in owner occupied facilities or for lease facilities?
I guess.
The interest.
I guess, all of these are, these, this actually is not owner occupied, so it's a mix. Again, it's the situation, really the most important thing is they have to have solid tenants so that the underwriting takes place for the term of the loan itself.
Any other questions or comments from council? Anne?
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
And Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Resolution forty-eight eighteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into cooperative agreement with Ohio University to share the cost of a professional services agreement for services related to the exploration of a cultural and performing arts center.
I will introduce it. Michelle?
Good evening, members of council. Before you this evening is a resolution that would permit the city to enter into a cooperative agreement with Ohio University for the purpose of determining community interest in and support for a cultural and performing arts center. Specifically, the agreement authorizes both parties to share in the cost of hiring an individual through a professional services agreement. This individual would help carry out next steps needed to best understand the community's level of interest and support for such a facility. To provide some background and context to our recommendations of a series of slides I'd like to walk council through. The vision for a cultural and performing arts center began as council goal and you can see it up here, is to create a gathering place where the Dublin community can celebrate creativity in both personal and shared experiences of the arts. Review and consider community models for creating a cultural arts center in Dublin, envisioning multidisciplinary complex with space for educational resources, popular and innovative performing arts and exhibit space for the visual arts. To execute on council's goal, staff has pursued a series of studies. It's important to note that as we began to execute on these studies and to execute on council's goal, Ohio University Crawford-Hoying and the Dublin Arts Council all came forward and asked to participate in these studies and to be a part of this process. They've remained involved since two thousand and fourteen. So what has been explored towards council's goals, I'll go into these a little bit more detail, but just to hit on them at a higher level, we did complete a market study, this determined that there was a market demand and support for a three to four hundred seat performance space. We next completed a business plan, this simply defined our operational costs associated with that size of space. The next study was a programming study, this determined estimated size and capital costs associated with the space. And then finally, and most recently, was a completion of feasibility study. This revealed based on current understanding of the above studies and understanding of those interviewed, that a capital campaign would fall short of the identified need. So I'll go a little bit further into the details of each of these studies. First of all, a market study was begun in two thousand and fourteen and was finished in two thousand and fifteen, I believe this was presented to council in February of two thousand and fifteen as part of a work session. What's included in this was an interview of thirty-six community leaders and arts organizations. The study looked at demographics both within Dublin and in central Ohio to determine the demand for performing arts. There was also a facility review similarly, looking at both Dublin and central Ohio at all the performance spaces within a certain mile radius. What was recommended was the need for a mid-sized three to four hundred seat flexible performance space. It was determined that there was a demand for the arts, market for the arts that exists both in Dublin and central Ohio and they also supported the concept of a professional regional theater company as a component to the center. Next completed was a business plan. This was based on the results of the market study, council asked the consultant to move forward with the business plan. What was included in this was review of comparable operations throughout the U.S., so it looked at similar theaters, performing arts spaces. And then also included is what you would expect to find in a business plan, operational goals, programming strategy, several governance options, facility management, staffing and an operating budget. So what was recommended as a result of this were possible staffing levels, a variety of revenue sources, again, it looked at several governance options. It also provided an operating budget, it was really a six-year budget, it was the pre-year before a facility would open and then those first five years. It was the pre-year before a facility would open, and then those first five years. And these are just a few of the items that I pulled out of that operating budget. It did show the first year, 52% of the budget would be covered by earned income. That's ticket sales, rental space, food sales, those types of things. And that that would rise to 71% earned income by the fifth year. It also anticipated public contributions over those five years that ranged between $240,000 and $260,000. And private contributions, again, over those five years, that ranged from $345,000 to The next study that was completed, and this was initiated and paid for by Ohio University, was a preliminary programming study. And this is, the first phase of this is completed and is on hold at this point. What was included is really, it's really a space needs analysis, and we asked them to provide a space needs analysis, and then also what would be the construction cost. What was recommended was 95,000 square feet. This is 52,000 square feet net, 95,000 gross. This did include rehearsal space and production space. All these items could be located off-site to reduce the size of this facility significantly. The construction estimate was set at $30 million. And as I just mentioned, space allocations and uses could be, would be reevaluated. And then lastly is the feasibility study. This was an interview with 29 potential donors and other community and arts leaders. Just to give a little understanding of feasibility studies and what they accomplish is, they are representative view of the initiative's strengths and weaknesses. They give you insight as to support for the concept and financial support. They help you understand questions that the interviewees have, concerns they may have, and also excitement they may have around the project. What the feasibility study said was a few things. If you pursue it now, knowing what you know from these interviews, the likelihood of raising funds is in the range of $3 to $5 million. If you consider the options and recommendations made by this consultant, there is potential for higher support in the $7.5 to $10 million range. And that's really what these recommendations relate to. These are, the recommendations you see here are really based on, how do you build a stronger foundation to pursue funding? And make a couple other comments about this. You know, there was mixed reviews and an array of thoughts and input based on this feasibility study. One of the interesting components of this was, there was some strong support by corporations. If you look at it compared to individuals and some of the charts that they have in there, there's some stronger support there. And it also made us aware that there is some understanding and awareness that was not there when we went out to do these interviews, that needs to be built. And that's part of some of these recommendations by the consultant that they came back with. Really, the question before council is, should the city explore council's goals further? And this would include solidifying and identifying other potential users of, or programming for the facility, to look again and reassess the size and the cost of the facility, determine if there are other potential donors, corporate, individual, and other sources of funding, such as grants and other sources. And then, once you've looked at these areas above and understood a vision and community value proposition, is there financial support? And in line with the vision of council's goals, I wanted to show this, because council's goals was a center which included an array of uses and users. And we focused a lot on Ohio University and Tantrum Theater, and they'll be a great partner, and they're a good anchor for the facility, but there were a lot more things that were envisioned by council as part of this. And some of these individuals, we've approached some of these organizations, some have expressed an interest in being part of the center and using the space. And there's others among this group that we'd like to explore further. This was in your memo, but this is just a breakdown of the cost sharing that's in the agreement with OU. It looks at in 2018 and 2019, really a total cost to the city of $59,000 over those first two years. You can see the breakdown of what percentage of that goes for the professional services agreement, and then what would be associated with some additional costs that may be incurred. We put 2020 in here, just depending on where this may, what this may look like at the end of 2019, and if there's still momentum, just having the ability to continue that contract. I did want to also mention that some additional resources have been offered by partners as part of this. Crawford-Hoying has offered office or meeting space within Bridge Park for this individual to meet. Marketing material design, Ohio University has offered assistance in-house. Have you seen any of the things that they've done for Tantrum? That's the capabilities that they have in-house to provide marketing design. And then the OU campus, OU just hired for this campus, similar to a lot of their other campuses, a development director. And there would be the opportunity for this newly hired individual to work with the consultant being hired as part of this agreement, to both promote Tantrum, but also a cultural and performing arts center. That brings us to our staff recommendation. It is, in order to arrive at a decision point as to whether a cultural and performing arts facility is viable and supported by the Dublin community, we are recommending passage of this resolution, allowing the city and OU to hire an individual via a professional services agreement to pursue several of the next step recommendations contained in the feasibility study. I can answer any questions that you have related to this? I did want to note that we have two individuals representing OU here this evening. We have with us Elizabeth Sayers, who's the interim executive VP and Provost for OU. She's also served recently as the interim of the College of Fine Arts. So she was involved with this project as we pursued it. And then Rachel Cornish is also here. You've seen Rachel before, this spotty before. And she's the Director of External Relations for the College of Fine Arts. With that, I can ask, answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council? Starting, okay, where do we want to start? Christina, we'll start with you.
Thanks. So, Michelle, what are some other cities that, that could be of similar size or similar revenue earning entity to our own that has something like this? Is there a way for us to benchmark a little bit in terms of taking a look at their financials and how it's going for them, and what we assume to be the case for what we're looking at? I think Carmel has something like this.
So the first two studies looked at that. The business plan looked at that. What are some comparable facilities throughout the country? So some of those examples were given within that. You know, near to us is New Albany. That's probably a good example. There's Carmel, Indiana, but that's probably not the best example to use in comparison to this, but New Albany is probably.
Perhaps, but I understand that one's pretty successful. So maybe it is one we should be looking at, in terms of thinking about how we would model something of our own. Just a thought. So I also started to think a little bit, would there be a community foundation around this thing? I think somewhere in here, you said there was like a fundraising council. Is that what that would be, is like a community type of foundation to help manage grants and gifts in?
So there would be a volunteer committee. I think that's what you may be referring to as part of these next steps, that would really help to understand and be a sounding board for the community and also serve as ambassadors. As we would move forward with looking at, you know, governance options, really beginning a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit, is probably the best route to go to raise these funds. We would look at both the Dublin Foundation and the Columbus Foundation also as potential to assist us in those efforts.
So, in thinking about this, and this is me just sort of putting my university hat on a little bit, whenever we think about going out there and soliciting money for anything that has anything to do with a facility anymore, you know, we want to put ongoing maintenance costs around those asks that we make of people. And so I wanted to ask a little bit about that and what your thoughts are about. You know, we talk about the ongoing philanthropy that's needed to bring in donor money, but it's not just about bringing in donor money to put on productions and things like that. It's also about the overall general maintenance of the thing. And so I wanted to hear a little bit about your thoughts around that and how that might work.
So I think as part of the capital campaign, you could look at a portion of that being to help in the initial few years, to help support the actual facility, and to be able to have a capital set aside at some point for the facility as well, for those ongoing maintenance needs.
Yeah, I think that would need to be a part of any strategy, whether you do a 501(c)(3) with its own board of directors, or you're pulling in, you know, expertise help from other foundations. I think you have to include that piece in there. I think it's really critical. And, you know, as you think about that, so my assumption is, if you're going to do a 501(c)(3), that this is going to have its own budget, right? It will, it'll be completely separate and detached from city budget.
That's correct.
Would this have any effect on our bond cap at all, if it's a separate 501(c)(3)? So we're good there? Let's see, I have a whole bunch of questions. So what would the strategy be for contingency plan, should the overall fundraising goals year-to-year not be met? So if you take a look at the two key numbers there, there's the public subsidy, along with the fundraising number, totaling, let's just use round numbers, roughly about $1 million a year. So for example, if you bring in $600,000 worth of philanthropy, there's the potential of public subsidy there of $400,000. If you bring in $1 million of philanthropy, there's no public subsidy, right? Or vice versa, which is the more concerning of the two. So I just wonder, what contingency is there to take a look at what that would look like, should that fundraising effort fall far short of what we're assuming we could get? Where's the safety net?
Right. I don't think that we've looked that far into that. I mean, I think having a solid business plan to begin with, and understanding what the capabilities of the facility are, and I think an important component of this is how you design the facility, so that you can use it in a variety of different ways, for rental space, for events. You know, the operations of it are going to be key. You're going to have, you know, people coming in and doing, you know, having a producing theater like OU, but there's also the opportunity for presenting to come in, too. So it's, you know, you have to have a strong business plan, the design has to be right. You have to set it up to succeed.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that's really the big challenge there in thinking about this moving forward. So do you already have an individual or a firm in mind for the professional services that you're talking, that this is asking of us?
We do. We have an individual that has a background in both development and performing arts.
Okay.
Strong.
You want to give someone else? Oh, I do have one more. This question to me is really critical. So if we go through this whole process and we decide to put this thing together, regardless, let's just use the $30 million number that you put in here, which is, I think, maybe a little bit low. But let's just say $30 million for argument's sake. The big question for me then is, what's the opportunity cost for other stuff we can't do if we're going to do that? Right? And I think that that needs to be a part of the analysis that would be included with any conversation about this. You know, whatever, let's just say we raise $10 million in philanthropy for that, right? There's a $20 million price tag there that maybe is not covered. So from the city's perspective, if we're putting that money forward, what's $20 million not, what other $20 million worth of things are we not going to do? And I think that's a really important question.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And I think the one thing I want to be cautious of is, you know, you get to a decision point. I look at this as Phase Two feasibility, is kind of how I look at this. And what yet do we not know that we would need to really make sure that we make that kind of decision very carefully? And also, so I think, you know, based off the 29 was certainly great input, helped to understand as we inch our way down the feasibility, but probably need to, if you really want to at least vet out this goal a little bit more, can we open that aperture up a little bit more and try to understand, really, is that really enough information about the feasibility? And I think it causes us to take a little bit of pause and say, and I think Michelle's slide spoke pretty well of this, is, you know, do we really ratchet back the expectation in terms of, you know, the size of the facility? Is there other way to wick it in with something else? Do we expand programmatically? And then looking at those other partners, too. So I kind of look at it as, you know, we're not signing the public up to try to do anything. I don't even know that the city, as part of the goal assessment and analysis of this, would even step into this. Right now, it's just, how far can you get down that road, operationally and capital-wise, without the city having to step into that or be much of a part of it, if you can at all avoid it, and if there's other ways to do that? So that's really the crux of the ask here, is to just vet that out one more step, before you make a final decision on the goal.
This isn't an exclusive city project. There's many partners in this, as I read through the material.
Correct.
Right, I'm not disputing that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not disputing that at all.
Oh, no, yeah.
In fact, I've said multiple times, other philanthropy and other entities.
And I guess my, yeah, what I'm trying to do is tag on that to say, we want to exploit that opportunity, yeah.
So to date, what have we spent on the Phase One, I guess, feasibility study, if you want to look at it that way?
I don't have those numbers in front of me.
That's okay, get it to me.
And I don't want to, so OU has covered the costs of two of the studies. There was a programming study done that I didn't even go into, done very early on. And then the most recent one, and the city has then covered these other three studies. And I believe they're all in the range of $25,000 to $30,000 each.
And there's how many? I'm sorry?
Three.
Three, okay.
Well, I think the thing that, you know, I really understand that you're trying to open up that aperture, as you say. And obviously, there's a lot of opportunities for many partners to utilize a facility. So I, you know, I understand, I get that. I think the thing that causes me some concern is this feasibility study, if you really look at it. And on that option C, I think one of the things that probably stands out most is that the number six on that was hiring a professional consultant, but there were five other options, five other recommendations within that option, that I wonder if we're missing out on. And the reason I say that is because an economic impact study, commission an economic impact study, you know, to understand whether or not, like a volunteer advisory group, to give you an idea on what the development of a performing arts center in Dublin might look like, you know, articulate the vision. Is it simply, I know we say Tantrum Theater is one we obviously like to retain here in Dublin, it's very valuable to the city, but just really understanding how big a seating space, what is the mission of all of this? I mean, all of those are big questions, and I don't know if hiring the person to just see whether or not we could raise the funds. I know we have some other areas that we'll be looking at, but raising the funds is one thing, is really identifying the key components of need, whether or not there's interest. All of that is really important. But I think the thing that bothers me the most is that, in the key interview responses, we fell so far below the norm in every area questioned about the need for this or the desire for this. And I struggle with how far down the road, you know, to go. How many seats, how many seat theater are we talking about that we're interested in for $30 million?
It would be 300 to 400 seat.
Yeah. And that was also brought out here, is that, there's a little fly that keeps flying in my hair.
Yes, we have a friend tonight.
I guess, I must have good perfume on. Is that the value of that, if you look at some of the others, $30 million got you 1,600 seat, you know? So I'm just, I guess I feel like there's so many unanswered questions here, that there's so many places I worry about how, so many performing arts centers do struggle with philanthropy. And if we're so far below the norm on interest for the 29 participants, is, golly, how far down the road do we go on this? It's just, what kind of answers do you expect within a six-month period or a one-year period? Will you answer all of these questions at option C? Is identifying, is that the need for? Because even if we identify, and then Christine Aluda, Christina is also very concerned, I think all of us are, is that we don't subsidize an operating cost over forever, because the economic impact on our residents will be huge if they're not interested in it. So, I mean, those are my questions.
So I think if we look at the majority of these recommendations and can carry them out in the next 12 to 18 months, we will be at a better point of truly understanding what the support is in the community and what the financial support is, that I think some of it was uncovered in this study, and I think we need to pursue it a little further. I will note, so the first bullet point, commission an economic impact study. We believe this would be after we do some other steps, that that's probably after another look at the business plan.
You might even find a partner or two who might be interested in funding that or participating. You know, if it looked like it was starting to show promise, would, you know, the Convention and Visitors Bureau or someone then take up enough of an interest to want to participate? But it's not something you want to sign up for and commit to now, until you have a little bit more information about whether you want.
Right. So I think part of what the individual would be tasked with is identifying, helping to identify, recruit, develop a strong volunteer advisory board, help us to refine and articulate the vision, mission, and programs. And when we went out for these interviews, there were a lot of questions that were asked that we didn't have answers to, that we think we can refine better. Develop community partners. We want to solidify partnerships that we have, look at other possibilities, and then develop a sustainable funding plan, essentially is, is there financial support for it? And then create a community engagement, community plan, and that would be part of, you know, the refining and articulating the vision and mission of that. We would not suggest that We would not suggest that we retain fundraising council at this point. They had suggested that, that they assist with these steps as well along the way. I think we would wait and see what we come back with, and if that makes sense as a next step, then we would look to that.
Well, and when you went out to the community on this first round of probing for interest, it was really like a cold call. There was not a lot of prep or conversation. So some of that interest level back could be reflective of that process?
That's, that's what we feel, that there was not a lot of awareness, very little awareness of this, so it was sort of hitting people cold with this. We did find two individuals that were interested in a somewhat significant level of support that had more knowledge of the Performing Arts Center and the association with Ohio University and Tantrum as well. So there may be more of that opportunity there.
You know, the individual was, individual feedback was kind of below the norm from what I read in the material. But I thought the corporate was really almost at or near the norm, is my recollection.
Some of those were at 78, when the, yeah, the norm would be 80. So that's what we did. We did sort of call that out as there was, and the consultants pointed it out as well, that there was a high level of corporate interest in the facility.
So I guess I would also point out that this was a goal in 1314, I don't know, 2013 of city council. It had been talked about for many, many years. I mean, probably two, three, four years before that, until it rose to the level of a goal at goal setting. And we take those very seriously. So I don't think anybody's asking the city to spend that, that $30 million or whatever. We're looking at partners, we're looking at trying to explore the options. I think it's worthwhile, and I think it'd be a shame to think about all the time and effort that went in into this from past councils that vetted this and had it rise to the level of a goal, to just let it go and not explore it. You know, if you don't, if we don't dream it, it doesn't happen. So anyway, that's my two cents worth on it.
Well, and I appreciate that. I think that's a good point. That being said, there are those of us who haven't had the benefit of all of those conversations. And that's not to say that I'm not supportive of it. I'm a big supporter of the arts. I grew up, you know, with a theater and music background. That's not the point, though. The point is to ask the questions, to let staff know what the concerns are, what the thoughts are, so that they have the right direction to go out and ask the appropriate questions.
No, it's exactly my point.
Give the.
That's just what we just said, is to let's go through with the study.
Right. And so, so we'll see. But this is a new makeup of council, and while I have my personal, you know, thoughts on the direction that I would lay to go, along with my concerns, you know, there's three other people who are also new to this, that I don't know if they share those same directions. And so part of this is having that discussion about what they think about sharing that direction. And having their respect for their ideas and their decisions.
Thanks, Christina.
Thanks. You know, I like, Jane, when I ran through a lot of the studies, and there's been three so far, so it's been studied for a while. I struggled to find not only overwhelming support, but solid support in those, in that work. And that, that gave me pause. You made a comment earlier, which I couldn't agree with more, when you do these types of things, that you have to set yourself up for success. And I think, to me, one of the next steps to really figure out the feasibility is, it would make sense to me that multiple partners would help fund this feasibility work. And I'm not sure necessarily why the city would be, one, taking the lead on all of that, and additional expense on all of that. I think that's important. I saw in one of the earlier versions, I thought, Michelle, that the funding from, from the OU half of this would come from us waiving their fees for the, the, and I didn't see that in this version. Is that correct or not?
No, that, that's not included as part of this anymore. So they, they would probably come forward as part of the hotel motel tax process again and ask for some funding to offset costs in the abbey, but they're not asking for it now as part of this.
But that's the same, but that's the same bucket, all right? It's still the city?
Right. So they were awarded 20,000 hotel motel tax funds last year and also this year. So they would come forward again as part of that process. I would anticipate and ask for something, something similar, just to see if there's supportive counsel for that.
So I guess what I'm saying is, I, I think if you're going to set yourself up for success, you have to have enough partners that are willing to do this feasibility work with you. I mean, if we do that work, carry the weight, do the load, I'm not sure we've got the partnership force to make it happen. And I, and I think it would take, it would take multiple partners saying, we're all going to put in our $15,000 to do that feasibility study because we think it's interesting, or we think it's interesting enough to do it. So I, I think that is a really important thing to do, set yourself up for that success. And I, I think that would be pretty useful. The other thing is, it's not clear to me, as a 501(c)(3), who would actually be the major governance body of this? And I know that gets, that gets figured out, having worked for a 501(c)(3) for many years. But that requires initial funding, that requires a fair number of things. And I think to understand, and the citizens to understand what those contributions would have to be and what the ongoing contributions would have to be, because those public numbers were pretty, were pretty big. So I go back to, I think that's a pretty big, pretty big financial commitment to ask for the community. And I would think if you could get partners to help do the feasibility study with you, that's a very good indicator. If you cannot, that's a very good indicator.
So we do have a partner in OU that's willing to split the costs of this with us. And as I mentioned, Crawford-Hoying is willing to offer space, which was very.
I'm thinking partners that would say, so the total cost of the study is $120,000, right? Who's willing to put three to five to six partners that are willing to put the money on the table to do the feasibility? Not the in-kind or not the, I'll do this and necessarily come look for relief. But I mean, it's really, it's a, I'm looking for some, some commitment to say, I want to, I want, I believe in it enough to do a feasibility study. I think that's important.
And I think OU is there with half of the cost to support the study. And as I mentioned, Crawford-Hoying is also willing to offer some space.
Maybe, Michelle, it would help if you explained, and for me, it would remind us, when they come in asking for a waiver and the money comes from the hotel motel tax, the criteria is that we believe that it's generating enough activity in our hotels and motels, or it's just that the money comes from that fund? Like, what's the criteria for them when they ask for a waiver?
There are many different criteria that can be used to authorize a hotel motel tax grant. It is not necessarily tied to stays in hotels.
Okay. But that, that would be a completely separate decision and apart from this agreement that we would.
Well, cultural items are included, beautification of the city, there's a number of other items that.
The codes specify the different criteria. Certainly, as part of the application process each year, we work to get information from the applicant as well as the CVB as to the number of hotel stays they had the prior year, if it's a recurring event. So we do try to incorporate that where it is applicable.
Kathy, I just wanted to address your other concern regarding the public contribution portion of this. It, it did show over the five years each year that a public contribution of 240,000 to 260,000 would be needed. This doesn't say it's from the city, but we could assume that that support would be from the cities. There's also state and federal funding available for the arts, although that's not significant as it used to be. And I think that to some degree, this may be similar to council supported the arts through the Dublin Arts Council. And that has supported $720,000 per year, at least this last year. So, you know, if you look at that in comparison, just.
From the bed tax?
Consider, yes, from, from the bed tax.
I would share many of Kathy and Jane and Christina's concerns. What I'm not sure of is that we're doing the right study. We've heard the library is, you know, doing a fundraising effort for a public plaza, and, and some of that was going to be art space as well in terms of theatrical or, you know, movie-related or whatever, different art shows and things like that. It had an arts component in that. I've also heard a lot of discussion about a possible arena, also in the Bridge Park District, and in this. And I don't know that there's room in our community for all of those. And I think what we need to ask ourselves as a community is, which path do we want to pursue? Do, you know, do we want to pursue outdoor public space in the library realm? Do we want to pursue performing arts space in form of a theater? Or do we want to pursue, you know, a larger space that would hold different kinds of events? Some of them may be performing arts related in terms of concerts and different things that it would bring to the community. I don't think there, I don't think we can do it all. It, I don't, we're kind of looking at it as a shopping list. And all of those entities need to raise public funds, or, I'm sorry, to raise private funds or depend on donations. I think that's the question we need to ask, is what is it that we want as a community? And then pursue the viability of all of those entities. I realize that the arena would be a more private space. It isn't, but in, you know, in a palatable world for me, this would be a private space too. The, you know, the, the models of these, of the dependency upon a million dollars a year or, you know, some form half a million to whatever of philanthropic contributions just to cover the operating expenses. I'd like to see somebody else take on this project. We cannot continue to add operating expenses on top of operating expenses and fund all of these on a pretty flat revenue trajectory. So it looks like Dana's got some thoughts to share.
No, I just, I appreciate that very much. Those are all, all great points. I do think, and I would add another one, the Aquatics Center to that too, that has recently come up as, as interest. And the reason I bring that up is only because I think when this goal was considered, I think, first of all, I want to give the council credit for being very visionary about that. I want to give Ohio University as a great partner in many ways, and hopefully a future partner in many more ways, credit for all that they've been doing to try to bring the cultural arts and their, their theater and so forth to the community, which has been well received. I think if you put yourself in the time and place that these things were being talked about, those other things weren't around. And so there was opportunity about that. Our foundation, we're in Dublin, continues to try to build and rebuild and redefine itself. I think too, the community is seeing, because Dubliners are great givers. We know that. Our corporations are great givers. A lot of that goes to the arts and, and other similar needs outside of Dublin as well. And I think, you know, one of the things we've often struggled with is, is, I think, over the years, is how much of, I think whoever talks that fly comes to. But, but, but who, how, you know, what is the capacity? What is the giving capacity? And I don't know that we've ever really worked really hard at trying to understand that. And the one thing I want to make absolutely clear is, no one in this process of the studies, the analysis, is signing up the city for anything yet. Certainly, you, you look at the operating costs, you look, we look at capital costs, operating costs, what the market might bear, what the market might support. So we were trying to look at that whole package, and then from there, figure out, you know, those next steps. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that while, you know, you may see public contributions or private contributions or combinations thereof, I don't want anyone to assume that that is the case and that the city has somehow signed up to do that. There's a lot of things that are possibilities, consideration, and those are the tough decisions you make with the heavy lifting that might have to be done if you're going to do something like this at the end of the day. So just, just as a point of clarification.
I certainly agree with all that. I just don't think that this study is asking the right question.
Yeah, and to your point, this is the main reason I jumped in. We haven't had that, I think you raised a great point. We haven't had a discussion as a city and as a city council about that whole philanthropic thing, that whole foundation thing, what might be those priorities from the city's perspective. I agree with you on that. I just wanted to mention the context of when this started to where we are, and these other things I think are coming along with some momentum. And that's, that's kind of what has the confusion. But I would agree, a conversation on that would be welcome.
I don't want to abandon a council goal. I hope that, but Dana illustrates it beautifully, that there's more information now, there's more, there's more tugs on the purse strings, there's more entities that, that are opportunities. And maybe after we ask the right question of, you know, here ye, here ye, O City of Dublin, what is your pleasure and what are you willing to commit to it? After that question is answered and it says, we would like to see performing arts, then, then, then we go here. I don't think we've gotten the answer of, we haven't, we haven't brought it in, we haven't narrowed the field of all of the, all of the opportunities. We need to pick one. And I, I feel like we're picking an opportunity before we ask the question, what is it you would like?
I understand you might feel that way. I don't think we're suggesting that you're picking one yet. I think what we're suggesting is trying to understand it more before a final decision is made. And I don't want to sound like I'm, you know, over advocating. I, I just, you know, think it's that next level of analysis that, that's really in question here. And, you know, it's one of those things where you have the analysis at your fingertips, you choose to not go down that road, as, you know, because there are these other competing interests. Now you've at least got that much in your hip pocket for the future that you can reference if someone else wants to pick that up.
But Dana, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be in, in that instance, if you could find partners to do with you? If you can't find partners to fund a feasibility study, there's a huge message in that. So I guess I'm.
I don't know that we've asked enough.
I don't know why, well, I mean, why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we?
Well, and that's a great point. I mean, if that's something that you, you maybe want to, want to not vote on this tonight, you want to, want us to go explore, that's the kind of direction we're looking for, is...
I just think there would be such a message in there that would be useful, useful to this conversation before, I think, anyway.
No, I don't disagree with that. I think if that's something that's important to council, we can do that.
I would think if we approached all of these folks, if, if they're really wanting to use a facility like this, you know, and maybe the numbers aren't big, but it would sure be nice to have some, you know, to have more people get some skin in the game and say, but from my perspective, I, I couldn't support this particular study because I don't think we asked, in my mind, this is the second question, and we haven't asked the first question yet. But that's me.
Well, see, I think, I would actually play on that a little bit. I think in my mind, we have asked the first question. However, the landscape has changed significantly, and enough time has passed since asking that first question, that the answers may be different based on today's landscape than they were when that first question was originally asked. And I think, and I think that's the struggle for me. I could support an initiative in this direction, maybe with some differences to it. And so maybe part of what we should be doing in terms of our due diligence as council is saying, let's table this for right now, but have a more meaningful and update, in-depth conversation with trying to figure out how we go back just a little bit to ask the remainder of that first question that I think is now an open answer because of the landscape changes, and to incorporate that in with a step one, step two of something like this. I just think enough has changed since the original question was asked. It's difficult to say that the answer we came up with then would be the same answer that we, and maybe it is. But I think that, I think if we could shift this a little bit, we could get where we need to be and really support it. I'm, I would love to see more fine arts in Dublin, absolutely. But I also have a duty to make sure that we do it the right way, both for what our constituents want and what makes sense to the city financially. And that's just a thought, totally open for discussion with everybody else. I'd love to hear what you guys have to say.
Well, I'm going to try this. You know, I think that this body, especially, you know, John and all the work he does with the Arts Council and the amount of financial support we provide to the arts, arts is sort of what sets Dublin apart in many different ways. We spend money on things that otherwise wouldn't get done because it isn't necessarily a money-making endeavor. So I think that's important. I think everybody up here would agree that that's important. I also agree with Mike that this has been a long time council goal to investigate this topic, and I think we do show deference to our previous councils and their goals. So I think that's an important thing to recognize. I agree that the circumstances have changed. When many of those studies were done, things have changed a little bit. I think that perhaps we could address the concerns I'm hearing. I, I think that perhaps we could address the concerns I'm hearing up here. Is there any reason, Michelle, that in this professional services agreement, we couldn't specifically direct them to recognize the changing dynamics and demographics of our community and incorporate that into a recommendation? I mean, couldn't we have a professional services contract with some, I mean, this is going to get done somewhere, right? It's either going to get done by staff and then you have to pay for all of it, or you're going to hire someone specifically to do this with a specific goal. Would we be able to come up, could you propose language that would address these concerns? That since these other studies have been done and all this other stuff, that the demographic graphics have potentially changed, the environment, the landscape, as Dana said, has, has possibly changed. And, you know, one thing that I think is really, really important, and I want to send a very, very strong message to OU, that we appreciate their partnership and their willingness to step up. And I think that's an, it's, it's, we are so thrilled that OU, OU has a presence here. And I can physically and perceive the increase in their presence. And I don't want to do anything that is seen as any kind of a disrespect or rejection of that kind of partnership. I don't think anybody on this council wants to do that. So I think that's really important. So I guess, I think I would make a motion that we table this and ask staff to come back with potentially additional partners to participate in this process here and to further tighten up what exactly that professional services contract might look like and what questions we're asking of them. It seems to me thirty million dollars for a 300-seat theater, that's a hundred thousand dollars a seat. That seems to me to be a little bit out of whack of what you get and what you're paying. And I understand all that. Things like where the location would be. You see Crawford-Hoeyng and we would assume that that would mean it's going to be located in Bridge Park. Well, if it's in Bridge Park, is it going to be right next door to the, the arena that they want to buy? I think those things need to be taken into consideration. And if there was a way that we could address these additional potential partners to have them, even if they just sent us a letter that said, we'd really like you to do this kind of a thing because we'd be interested in the results, if we could get some more people to sign on, at least with a show of their support, and some kind of a bullet point list of the questions we're specifically trying to ask this person to answer, this is a relatively modest investment. And with the sharing of the expense with OU and maybe some of these other people, I think maybe we can get where we need to be in relatively short order. I mean, I don't think, there's not a timeframe on this like there was on some of the previous things we've done. I don't know. Those are my thoughts.
No, I, I think that's, that's, you know, we're, we're looking for guidance. These are the very helpful discussion, great questions.
Was that a motion?
I believe, I make a motion that we table this until staff is able to bring back to us at least the results of an effort to expand the support from different entities and a bullet point specific goals that we expect this professional services contract to address.
I'll second the motion and put an emphasis on reaching out to some of our other partners. I think that's useful.
There's a motion and a second. Ann?
Sorry, Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I turned my paper over to write on the back. Okay, we're up to the other portion of our agenda, the final plat, Bridge Park East, Block D, Section Six.
Great, thank you and good evening. This is a request for a final plat for Bridge Park Block D. The site is located on the east side of Riverside Drive, south of the John Shields Parkway and north of Tuller Ridge Drive. The plating process is for the subdivision of properties in order to identify property lines and establish necessary easements. Plats can be reviewed in phases and the preliminary plat was approved by city council on October 23rd of 2017. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the final plat at their meeting on June 7th. The final plat as presented this evening is substantially similar to the approved preliminary plat. And the Planning and Zoning Commission was appointed by city council as the final reviewing body for the site plan review for Block D. The block's development plan was approved at the same, at that same meeting on which the approved development will occur. The plat finalizes the lots, rights of way and easements for the development. The applicant is proposing a final plat to subdivide 5.296 acres into five lots and rights of way for the extension of two public streets. Two of the lots will be dedicated for public open space. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission have reviewed the proposed plat against the final plat criteria and finds that the criteria has been met or is met with conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of the plat with one condition, that the applicant ensure that any minor technical adjustments to the plat are made prior to city council, which this has been completed. And I would be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant's representative is available to answer questions as well.
Question, questions from council? Chris?
I read through the meeting minutes and, and the various boards and commissions' concerns with regard of the lot coverage and proximity. There really has not been any change to this since we saw it previously, correct?
Correct, to the plat, no.
Yeah, I express a lot of concern about the lot coverage proximity to the pedestrian tunnel, the blank walls on the adjacent greenway, and, you know, I, all of those concerns remain. There wasn't anything that was addressed in them, so.
Any other questions from council?
Can I, can I ask why there hadn't been changes or?
You sure can.
Or, I mean, there were, if there were a lot, again, I wasn't part of that. If there were a lot of questions, then, can you share some feedback on each or some of those? Thank you.
So the, the plating process is only to create the lots and the rights of way. The lot coverage and other elements to the design of the development was at site plan review. And Planning and Zoning Commission was the final reviewing body appointed by council to have that review. The preliminary plat was approved by city council in October of 2017, and this is to be substantially similar in the final plating process, to be similar to the preliminary plat that was approved.
Did that answer your question?
I think it did.
There you go. Any other questions from council? I make a motion that we approve the final plat.
I'll second it.
Ann?
Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
No.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Motion to waive competitive selection process for the Director of Taxation. Dana?
Thank you, members of council. On August 31st, Director of Taxation Fay Gibson will be retiring after 20 years of service with the City of Dublin, but let's be clear, 37 years of public service.
Denied. We are not accepting her resignation, so let's just...
We want. I know, Mary, you told me that a number of times, so.
It solves that problem.
I'm trying to help you, but it ain't working, so I'm trying. But this evening, I'm requesting a motion that will waive the competitive selection process for this position, which will allow us to appoint Kevin Robinson to fill the vacancy. Mr. Robinson joined the city as tax manager in 2017. Prior to that, he had spent 14 years with the City of Columbus as Assistant Income Tax Administrator. Much like Fay, Mr. Robinson has been instrumental in working on municipal tax issues at the Ohio State House. He's viewed as a subject matter expert on the topic and has a positive working relationship with his peers, legislators and outside organizations such as Ohio Municipal League and a society of certified public accountants. Now, when Mr. Robinson or Kevin was selected for the tax manager position, the city did undergo a competitive selection process for that. And I would also like to add with in mind a succession plan for Fay, so that was all very much part of that process. So if council has any questions, you can certainly address those to myself or Director Finance Angel Muma. But what we're really in need of is a, is a, I guess, a motion and a willingness of council to waive the competitive selection process.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, I make a motion that we waive the competitive selection process for the position of the Director of Taxation. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ann?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Staff comments. Dana?
Yes, in your packet, we provided information, I think you had a separate set of information regarding the 2019 to 2023 capital improvement program. The preparation of the CIP, as we call it, begins with departments compiling their requests and submitting them to me for prioritization based on what I see or can interpret as council goals, community survey results, financial resources available and so forth, certainly be it from the income tax allocation, TIF revenues, bond proceeds, grants and other sources. Over the next month, I'll be working with staff to prioritize the CIP in a manner that's responsible from a community standpoint as well as a financial standpoint. Our initial read of the requests indicates we have requests and access of resources by approximately a hundred million dollars. And don't be surprised by that. I mean, we all at our home, right, have more need than we have ability, so what we'll do is try to prioritize the best we can. So there's a lot of heavy, heavy lifting ahead internally in the upcoming weeks so that I can submit to you a balanced CIP in accordance with Section 0803 of the revised charter. And we certainly look forward to our conversation with council about that and any direction you'll give us regarding priorities. We began providing the list that's, that's identified to council a few years ago to make sure that there were no projects that were council's priorities that we were overlooking. Now, we think we got a pretty good list, but there may be more other thoughts that you have. So we're simply asking if you have time during your summer recess to look through this document and kind of get a sense of what's there. And if there's something, you know, glaring that's on your mind, you can just send that, if you would, send that to me in an email and let me know that. And then we'll incorporate that in the list, and we can also look at potential costs and so forth associated with that and take a look at it relative to the overall proposed CIP. So as the memo states, we'll bring forward the CIP for its first reading on August 13th. That's just an introductory reading. And then from there, there'll be workshops where staff will provide the rationale for the timing and priority of the proposed projects. And certainly staff will be present at those workshops or work sessions to answer any questions you have. And the work sessions are scheduled for August 15th, August 20th and August 29th. And that's all I have on the CIP. I have a couple other items, if that's okay. Any questions about that?
Can I have a couple of questions about the CIP?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that information. It's all very helpful. One of the things I think I'd like to see hand in hand when we bring these CIP items forward is anticipated debt issuance. We have a, we have a great history. Angels provided us with a history of our debt issuance and when it expires and all of those sorts of things. And if we could do a projection out five years with our CIP process, so, you know, what are we looking at in each year of debt issuance and, and where that would take us to the whole picture? That'd be really helpful for me as we look at, you know, the hundred million dollars we'd like to have and paring it down to the things that we can afford.
Certainly, we bring that forward and it's part of the introductory conversation that we have so that council's very aware going into it what we are projecting for that five-year time period. And then probably most importantly, what capacity we have left if everything happened according to plan, because we never want to get to a place where we have no capacity to do anything additional or something that may come up.
And of course, in addition to that, we'll be making certain assumptions about our revenues in order that we base our, you know, projected capability to do these projects.
Angel, could I, could we get that ahead of time as well? You, you said that'll be part of the introduction. Could you update those schedules and get that to us along with, I know we got our first pass at the...
The debt schedules?
Uh-huh.
What I can provide to you in advance is the existing debt as it stands today. Part of what we will go through over the course of the next month before the first reading takes place is actually what projects, if they are prioritized and determined that the administration's going to recommend moving forward with them, then how would we fund that? So until we go through that process, I, or I can simply, as part of your CIP document from last year, it had the five years in it.
I guess maybe what I would ask in sort of a companion to that is, yes, the background. But if we were to take a debt package of plus 10 million, plus 20 million, whatever, our, our cost of capital, what that would look like, what the interest rates. So along with, here's a set of projects, a schedule that would look at the cost of financing it, perhaps we decide we'll, we'll use cash for some of it or whatever, but some type of unexpected debt issuance and the cost of capital for that debt issuance so that we have that sort of at the same time we're having the conversation?
Sure.
If that makes sense. I think that would make, I think that would, as a first time through it, I think that would be quite a helpful...
And that is always part of the document itself. I mean, I have a copy of last year's final version.
Okay.
But what we do is in addition to providing, we're going to finance this $10 million project, there's actually a schedule by year that shows what that debt service would be. And for example, for last year's, it made an assumption of a 5% interest rate for a 20-year bond issue. So we project out.
And so that's, that, that'll give us the, that it wouldn't be for just that project. You would give it to us for, we have a current debt load, current...
Correct.
Okay, so that would...
Yeah, you definitely will walk away from this process or you'll get at the onset a comprehensive view as to what our debt schedule would look like if council approved the CIP as we will, as Dana will bring forward, as recommended.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Dana, second item. Yeah, sorry, just was thinking that through. A couple, a couple more things. Oh, you had in your packet a work session follow-up regarding the, the one Wednesday session that we had regarding bridge street code and historic district work session. So hopefully you found that to at least, I appreciate that Vince and Jennifer, Jenny put that together as a follow-up. So certainly if you see anything there that didn't, doesn't quite look right, we'll have minutes later. Let us know if we're missing something. I think they caught all the key points. Want to make sure you're aware of that because we're going to keep working down that road and prepping for our future work sessions and so forth. And...
I had a quick question for you, Dana, on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Just on, on the notes under historic district on that, it says, what was at the bottom of bullet point, coordinate this effort with the recently initiated historic district design guidelines update using the same stakeholder committee. I wasn't quite understanding what coordinate this effort was, whether that's an overall effort. And that stakeholder committee is a very small group of, of people. So not understanding what that stakeholder committee was actually coordinating was my question. But I can, you can answer that later.
Yeah, let me check and advise on that one.
That's fine.
Thank you. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Committee reports, P and Z, Jane.
We didn't have a meeting last week, so I have nothing to report.
Admin, Chris.
Thank you all for your time last Wednesday evening in our review process. I think it was a good and constructive time. We look forward to the meeting minutes. Christina was so kind to volunteer to take the meeting minutes for there, so hopefully we will be seeing those in the coming days. Thank you to Dana and to Ann for your time. And we still are looking forward to a receipt of your goals, and we will combine those with the meeting minutes and have a report that we will file with Homer. So thank you all for your participation.
Thanks, Chris. Community Development Committee, John?
Nothing.
Finance, Mike?
Yeah, we have, since we're not going to see much of each other in July, and I know everybody will miss out on that, that we have our regular August meetings, but we have a six o'clock bed tax meeting on August 13th of the Finance Committee. And as Dana pointed out, the 15th, 20th and 29th if needed for CIP. Typically, we don't need to go into the third one, but it's there as a placeholder. So that's all I have for Finance.
Thanks, Mike. Public Services, Christina?
Nothing right now.
Coda, Kathy?
Yes, thank you. So the, it was a board meeting last week, and one of the, I think, very interesting to begin to put electric buses into the fleet. 10 of them initially the thought into 2019, and I thought, Dana, when I looked through your other information, you shared some information about our recent electric car purchases and the plan to have, I guess, 10 in our fleet by 2019. So do you want to comment a little bit about this? I mean, this trend is happening all over the country, and I think it's wonderful that we're, we're part of that as well, so maybe you can share a few comments on that.
Well, a lot of people look at the electric vehicle as, as smart cities. I kind of look at it as sustainability. There's a lot of different, you know, diverse approaches to our fleet and how we operate it, so, you know, we, we're one of the first to do compressed natural gas. I believe the electric vehicle opportunities have come forward as a result of grant opportunities and on state bid and so forth, so those have come online more and are becoming more available, so that's, hence the purchase of that and the, and the future purchase of more of those. I would also mention that...
So will any of those be, the first four were passenger cars, right?
Correct.
Other types of vehicles, or is it too early to...
I think it's too early to tell that right now. We can certainly keep you up to date on that. And then electrical charging stations, which we are in the process of deploying, and I think there's information about that as well, and very excited about getting those out there.
At the rec center, right?
At the rec center, right. We do have those, those are also available in the parking garages over in Bridge Park and, and where else? Crawford-Hoying has some of those, so we're trying to see more of those in our own public garage. I think we'll, we have those in the new garage by the library as well, so.
And I noted that the ones at the rec center, and I'm, I don't know about it, the garages, they're free for folks to use, at least at this point is what it said in the memo, right? I'm getting some heads nodded, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
I believe they're going to be joining us in the parade on, on Wednesday, and they're working really hard of, it's, it's very difficult to get an organization like that up and running again after they've hit the reset button, and they're working really hard to do it. There's just a lot of work to do, but they are continuing to chip through that.
Okay, Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
No, we had to move our meeting, but I think it's now scheduled for later this month or early next month.
Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Chris?
We had a placemaking lunch on the 26th, and, you know, it was really good information. The charge really was what some of the things we were trying to do here in that small park and the landing on the west side of the footbridge, and you know what? Placemaking's hard, and there's no substitute for difficult conversations and rolling up your sleeves and creative thoughts and, you know, that, they distributed a lot of very good information, the slide deck is available, but, you know, it was really a reinforcement of how difficult it is to make a place great, and we, I'm really thankful that we all together are about taking up that task and making the places that we are making be great.
Thanks, Chris. Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to report.
How about U.S. 33 Innovation Corridor?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
How about Dublin Arts Council, John?
Nothing, thank you.
Board of Education, Christina?
Yeah, I met with Todd last week. We talked a little bit about the progress with the Emerald Campus. Their signs are up, if you've noticed, both out front and on the 270 side, which is pretty cool. We talked a little bit about their upcoming bond levy and how well the schools have done to stretch their current levy, but there'll be more to come on that, I'm sure. We also talked about how to honor some of our past, kind of vis a vis the 1919 building, which turns 100 next year, go figure, and working alongside the celebration for one of our newest community members with the opening of the library. So we'll be engaging Tom Holton and the libraries and a variety of other folks to sort of fit a little bit of an homage to our, our historical past, and so I'll probably reach out to you, Jane Fox, to also help me with that as well. So that's kind of exciting, I'm looking forward to that. Be cool.
Thanks, Christina. Washington Township, Chief Eric, you got anything you want to add to the good of the order? We really appreciate all the support you give us for our Fourth of July celebration on Wednesday. Greatly appreciate all the efforts that you put forth. I know, Eric, you sent some dates that Dana, you and I can get together. I think the ball's in my court on that email, so I will get back to you and we'll get that scheduled so we can start getting some of those boxes checked, so thank you to you guys. Council Roundtable, Jane?
I always get to go first, don't I?
Yep.
Let's see, first and foremost, I want to say we lost a very, very special person this past week, Joyce Richards, long, long time resident of Historic District. Her family has lived in that beautiful little stone house since the 1850s, and so I just want to, you know, just recognize what a special lady she was and how we'll miss her. Speaking of the Historic District, a couple of things. I know code enforcement's been doing some work to make sure that the parking on North High Street is, is being enforced so that we have those spaces for our restaurants, but we have a very, I would ask that code enforcement go down to South High Street. We have some, we have some folks that probably work down there that park in the spaces, and a little nice one week's worth of reminders would probably take care of that problem. And then the other thing that I want to bring up is, for the future, as we look at the Historic District and some of the zoning that we do, if we could, as a council, maybe look at some creative thoughts on how to activate that street level back to retail and restaurants so that we have destination areas, whether that's something that we can do with zoning, whether we can do that with incentives, whatever it is, but we're starting to fill in with more offices than we are retail or destination areas, and we could have a pretty, we could have a pretty good loss of interest south of 161, which used to be pretty vibrant. So it's just, I'm just asking that as we go forward, we have a little strategies there. And then the last thing I'll ask is that, as we have this public session on the, on the Plaza on the east side, the rec center doesn't have any images or, you know, that big board that asks the questions, there are no images of the park over there. It'd be kind of nice to get, I think we asked that before, it'd be kind of nice to get some images up and let people maybe make some comments, stick some sticky notes on just to get a little extra feedback that way. And I think the webpage also would be nice to have that new video up, because some of the images are kind of a couple of years old, so it's kind of hard to comment on images that are old. So just, you know, so we have someone gather a little bit more information. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Kathy?
And Jane, to that point, I, I think if I remember correctly, staff said that they were actually going to do some updates to some of those images right before the 11th based on the feedback. That was my recollection, so not just put what we saw, but put some updates. Matt's shaking his head, yes. Donna's shaking her head, yes, so, yeah, so that we're all saying, yeah, but we, we think this could be different, but, so we're all looking at the same updated images. Thank you very much. So Donna and I braved the heat on Saturday along with Doug McCullough. We were at the Smart Columbus Experience Center, the grand opening for that, and that was very cool. I, I will tell you, and I think I mentioned this last time, sometimes with the, the smart cities and it, it conceptually sounds interesting, it's, would be wonderful to be able to touch and see and what we're talking about here, and that's exactly what this center is. It'll be open seven days a week, it's free, you can drive some electric cars, you can see the future of technology, some interesting simulations. The space is set up for some, from discussion rooms, so I, I think some really interesting things will happen there. There was a big street fair of all the people that consider themselves no longer transportation, they're mobility partners now. That's the word, and that makes a lot of sense, because mobility is, is what creates opportunity in so many ways. That's always been the case, and it was really interesting to see how that could in fact play out. And there were a lot of people there, it was so, it was hot, 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 it was like noon on Saturday, it was really hot, but there was a lot of excitement there and a lot of energy around this, this future, and a lot of pride that Central Ohio, Dublin, the community, that we're in the middle of all that and we're, we're really where people are coming to pay attention to. So there was a lot of energy, and it was really fun, as you can tell, so get a chance, go down there, because you can actually drive some of those, or ride in some of those, or both on that, so thanks very much. And I look forward to seeing everybody on the Fourth of July, but it'll be nice and cool. Thank you.
Of course. Thanks, Kathy. John?
Again, congratulations on your bridge program, Meg, and the complexity of that project is just amazing, and then here's something I'm sure that's worried all of us, and that's lightning strikes. I was just talking to a guy the other day with a tower, and he says, oh, we're hit by lightning all the time, and I was thinking, my God, that'd be a disaster for what we're doing over there, since you have the tallest edifice rising up out of the river valley, it's actually taller than the sycamore trees. I, I was just wondering what your, you know, where we're at with that kind of thing, and how that thing is grounded and, and set up for that kind of problem.
It's grounded. That's what my engineer's saying, it's grounded.
It's grounded in water, in a riverbed.
It goes way below the water.
So, yeah, that is an interesting point, so anyway, I see him down there working on St. Mary's for the same problem. And then on the hot theme, Tom Holton and I was wondering about the original springs that fed all the original pioneers and the reason the Indians loved living here and why they wanted to be in this particular area. So we were talking about the Souda Park, which was a campground and also a home for the indigenous natives, and he sent me pictures showing me that particular spring still operational running out of the hill, and it's pretty interesting. And then he is now going to embark on the famous 161 intersection spring, I think, and try to find that. I don't know if it's still there, still coming out. We have a lovely fountain there representing that, so he said he's going to start that venture also, so sort of a neat little history things about the city, so someday there may be canned or bottled Dublin Spring Water, you never know, so could be. And then I want to wish you all...
I think there are some pictures of the swimming pool that that spring filled down there at Souda Park. It used to, it used to be a swimming pool there.
It was filled by that spring, wasn't it?
Filled by the spring, yeah.
Yeah, it's sort of cool to reactivate that stuff, and sometimes it gets covered over with construction, and what a waste. And then I want to wish you all a happy Fourth and a great holiday. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Michael?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. You know, we talked, a lot of issues were raised tonight with respect to the plaza, and there's so many opinions, and it, you know, it reminded me of the grounds of remembrance. We had a lot of discussion, well, it's too contemporary, well, it needs to be more historic, it's in the district, it's, and it occurred to me that that's, you know, a lot of that's in the eye of the beholder, and that, I guess we lose sight of sometimes how lucky we are to have the incredible projects that we have in our community, and we sit there and go, don't like this, and don't like that one. We, we're such a, it's such an incredible community, and so many others would love to have our problems sitting here talking about some of these things, so anyway, I just wanted to point that out. Also, I've had some, several inquiries, and I went over and looked at it myself, on Lightfield and Coventry Woods. The trees on that, that road are very, very low, and they're kind of bristly. If you're riding a bike, you can get hit in the face, a lot of cars will hit it. I don't know if you've been over there, you know what I'm talking about, but it is, it's not the norm street tree that we have. I don't know what they are, but...
I'm sorry, where was that at again?
On Lightfield.
Langfield.
Light, L-Y-T-F-I-E-L-D.
Okay, Lightfield, okay.
So it's just a strange thing. Paul's seen it. Even a pickup trucker or any kind of vehicle going through there will, will run amok on those. Kids on sidewalk on bicycles, it's, they don't seem to grow up, they just seem to go out, so. Anyway, if somebody could look into that...
We will do that.
See if we can get a solution to trim or whatever. I think there's a tax sodium dystocoma, and they could start limbing them up. Aren't they a little prickly or whatever is wrong? I mean, yeah. Yeah, little fuzzy things with, yeah. Okay. Yeah. Appreciate, that's all.
No limbs ever grow up. The tree does not grow up from the bottom, so I, I think the big, there's a lot of canopy work to happen around the city, and Bridge Park the same.
Yep. They're nice trees, though, they're really, very unusual tree, very cool. Yep.
Christina, thanks, Mike. Christina?
Thanks. I don't have anything except I've been sitting there staring at that finial in front of Michelle, and I'd like to talk about it. Is there, is there a reason there?
It's a microphone.
Oh, it belongs, Megan, of course it does. Oh, you're hiding it now? Are we not talking about it tonight? Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't even bring it up. I've been looking at it all night, I'm like, ooh, is, are we putting that on more stuff?
That is a finial.
I said that, didn't I just say it was a finial?
On top of a light, huh?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That is the approved finial that we have.
If you said that was the trophy for the award for the Public Services Director of the Nation, we would have started congratulating you. Yeah.
Megan always carries around her trophies.
Carries it with her into the council. Not to brag, but she's just going to put it down here.
Yeah, next time you got to pick up what I lay down there, Megan.
Chris?
A couple things. In, in light of the conversation about advertising our public input session on the park, I, I had sent some emails around about ways to garner public input from the exact space. I, I'd like to see some signs over in Bridge Park, in the future parks, saying, you know, your next park is going to be here, you know, in public input session on this day, you know, or send your thoughts to this link, or, I'm no marketer whatsoever, but I would like to see something in that space that drives people to participate in the discussion that we're going to have on the 11th, I believe, so whatever we can do, I certainly would appreciate it.
I know the signs you're talking about, I'll, I'll address that.
Great, thank you. The, the work on the bridge, I'm sorry, the work on the Emerald Parkway Bridge, is that complete? No. What remains outstanding?
Why don't you address that, Megan, if you don't mind?
I just, I am so appreciative that we're trying to extend that, the life of that deck, but it seems like a very rough surface at this point in time, so I'm hoping that you're going to tell me that there's something else they're going to do that's going to smooth it out. There definitely is, and there's going to be some grinding done to smooth out some of the roughness that you're feeling, and then there's also some grouping that's done to help with drainage, so it's not done. There will be definite improvements that you'll notice. That was the perfect...
And striping as well, and...
And striping, yeah, that kind of work, but specific to your concerns that... Right, I, I knew that there was some, you know, sweeping that needed to happen and a few things like that, but I was hoping there was going to be something on the finish, because it's, it's a little rough. It's, you know, it looks good, you can, you can tell that it's a solid pour, so the grinding will be most helpful to that. And then I had written down, it's funny that you brought that up, of canopy issues, and I'm hopeful that, Matt, we've had some conversations about off-season work, and I'm hoping that in your CIP request is going to be addressing canopy issues citywide of tree work along roadway networks, so if we could take a look at some of those, or, you know, when you, if you do it when they're young, it's very easy, and when you wait until they're very old, it is significantly more difficult. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. I have just three quick things. I appreciate the Lime Bike report that we got. I'm just curious if they are, if Lime Bikes is satisfied with the performance. I mean, is that meeting what their expectations were, or is it below, a below or above? Nick?
Yes, I think they're very satisfied with the output that they've been getting, and I actually jotted down some updated numbers, so they now have over 1,000 riders and over 1,600 rides that have taken place in the city of Dublin. They've now expanded a pilot to Worthington, and they also are in Columbus, so I know that with the mobility study, one of the things that Joanne Shelley and the rest of staff were hoping to see is that increase in connectivity from bike shares, so that's exciting to see in the surrounding area.
Perfect, great, thank you. And for council, Ann put the proposed regular meeting schedule for 2019 at our places. If you could look at it, we're going to need to adopt this, is that our second meeting in August, or is that our first, August 13th? We just adopted by motion.
I just wanted to get that out to you before the break, so you could take a look at your own calendars.
Yes, so don't just leave it here.
I had two in my folder, if somebody doesn't have one, I likely have yours, so if you could check and make sure it was in your red folder when we sat down, and I had two.
And we can send that to you electronically as well, so.
We always struggle with our level of optimism that we can't meet on the night of the National Championship football game, so. They're ranked now coming in number four, so they got a shot at it, I guess. And one last thing, the script for the Fourth of July celebration was at my place tonight. Now, I just want to go over something real quick, because I think it's worth pausing for a minute and, and talking about this. Sean Clifton is our grand marshal. I know General McDaniel knows Sean Clifton, but listen to this, he is retired Green Beret of more than 22 years in the military, that spent 15 years in the Army Special Forces. He executed multiple tours in Iraq and Afghanistan, where he was critically wounded in 2009 while conducting a raid on a Taliban compound.